Was it good after we picked the jury?
Yes, it was good.
I, uh... I just...
I saw that.
Very good. Thanks a lot. Thanks, Rick.
Yep, hold on to it.
All right. Well, looks like she got it. Let's actually go.
Well, you know, if it's a good settlement, nobody's happy.
That's exactly what the judge said. A bad settlement is better than a good lawsuit.
That's what...
It's gonna be interesting. Whole lot of, whole lot of effort. Greetings.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing? Did you finish all the chicken?
Looks like we got a spare chair.
Did anybody finish all the chicken?
Well, I took home about fifteen.
Really?
Somebody else took home fifteen. We had two hundred pieces of chicken.
Eight seconds to spare!
I didn't know that.
Eight seconds to spare. Eight seconds to spare.
No hill for a climber.
Hey!
Oh, sorry.
That would've been good.
Oh, I meant in, in.
Yeah, oh, right, yeah. It gotta've been southern Missouri somewhere.
You got it taken care of on my happy jam.
Now, the proclamations.
I know. We'll see how far this, we'll see how far this gets. I don't think it's gonna...
Proclamations and high...
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the Manchester... In the second reading as well, on the, uh...
Yes.
Last meeting, it's just that then they tabled it.
Okay.
Is that your recollection?
No, I have no recollection.
That's amazing, the difference in light bulbs.
I haven't seen that.
I think, I think Shelley's the person who answered that question.
What's the double?
Was the bill, the Manchester district...
In case we were contemplating another, uh, use for the room.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Another, another legal issue.
But we didn't know if there was any kind of, um...
Yeah.
They just need to now do the vote on the second reading.
Motion to enact or amend.
Yeah.
And then, yes.
We thought maybe we were gonna get really creative and have a third reading tonight.
Ooh, wouldn't that be fun?
That's what Shelley and I inquiring minds wanna know.
Also sign up too many plates in the air.
Fourth and fifth.
Of course you did.
Since we got three versions out there.
Let's read them all. Full text. You know what was gonna be here?
Full board, full house.
All right. Set to go, uh... April 1st, right? Uh, we, maybe I should announce. Ladies and gentlemen, I hate to tell you, we've decided not to have a meeting tonight. April Fool's. Call the order to the Brentwood Board of Aldermen meeting for April 1st, 2019. If you'd all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give me a roll call, please.
Mayor Thornton.
Here.
Alderman Dimmitt.
Here.
Alderman Kramer.
Present.
Alderman Leahy. Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neill. Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderman Weggie.
Here. All right, that brings us to item number three on the agenda, which is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes for this evening's agenda? Alderman Leahy.
Your honor, in, on, uh, section four B, we have an Eagle Scout proclamation. Mr. Xander is away at college and we will do him later in the summer when he comes back. We have Sean Seegeris here, who also has a proclamation because he too has completed all the requirements for his Eagle Award.
Fantastic, so we'll, at least we have one Eagle Scout present. Fantastic, so, uh, we'll do Sean's and we'll hold off on Xander's.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Uh, I have a couple of things, uh, at the, at the board's pleasure. The first is, um, the applicant for the, uh, bill in eleven B this evening has asked that we postpone action on that bill until April 15th. I spoke with him this afternoon, or I spoke to the head of the company this afternoon. Uh, they are working with a new financial partner that they feel will improve the, uh, project, or at least the, uh, prospects for the project, and ask that they be given some time to work out the details with their new financial partner until they can, uh, and they plan to come back next, uh, on the 15th and, uh, pursue that application. So if, uh, if anyone on the board would like to make a motion to, uh, postpone eleven B until April 15th, that would be, uh, that would be helpful. Mr. Chairman.
So moved.
Yep. Alderman Dimmitt, is that point of order, or...
Yeah, would that also be for five B?
No, actually not. Uh, on the advice of counsel, since the meeting was posted and a public meeting was posted and announced, we will have a public meeting and anybody who showed up to make a public comment will be allowed to make a public comment. The board just won't be taking action on the bill this evening, so. Did I get that about right?
Yes, sir, we can recess the public hearing and resume in the...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So they'll, they'll have two opportunities, but anybody who showed up to comment on that bill shouldn't be denied the opportunity this evening, sir. Uh, okay, any other questions about that? Did I hear a "so moved"?
Yes, so moved.
Great. And a second, fantastic. Uh, all in favor of postponing item eleven B until the April 15th agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Very good. Uh, the second item is eleven C. The applicant has, uh, had a conflict and will not be able to present, uh, the plan this evening and so they've asked that we postpone action on that item until, I believe, is that April 15th as well? Yeah, April 15th as well, so, uh, same story, uh, same motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all, uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of postponing item eleven C until the April 15th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Very good. Uh, the second item is eleven C. The applicant has, uh, had a conflict and will not be able to present, uh, the plan this evening and so they've asked that we postpone action on that item until, I believe, is that April 15th as well? Yeah, April 15th as well, so, uh, same story, uh, same motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all, uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of postponing item eleven C until the April 15th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Very good. Uh, the second item is eleven C. The applicant has, uh, had a conflict and will not be able to present, uh, the plan this evening and so they've asked that we postpone action on that item until, I believe, is that April 15th as well? Yeah, April 15th as well, so, uh, same story, uh, same motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all, uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of postponing item eleven C until the April 15th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Very good. So, uh, tonight's agenda will move eleven B and C to the 15th and we will do, uh, Sean Seegeris, uh, Eagle Scout instead of Xander's. I think that pretty much covers it. Is there any objection to approval of this agenda by acclamation? Seeing none, it'll be so approved. All right, um, so that gets us to Missouri Local Government Week. Uh, we have a proclamation for Missouri Local Government Week. Uh, Ms., uh, Alderman Kramer, do you have that handy?
I do, your honor.
If you would read that for us, please.
Or a facsimile thereof, actually. Uh, State of Missouri proclamation in recognition of Local Government Week, whereas local governments in Missouri make important decisions that affect the lives of all Missourians, and whereas local governments are the level of government closest to the people, and whereas local governments include Board of Aldermen, city councils, county commissions, and school boards, among others, and whereas local governments are the ultimate expression of grassroots democracy, and whereas local governments play an essential role in the quality of life in Missouri communities, and so now therefore I, Christopher Thornton, mayor of the city of Brentwood, do hereby proclaim April 14th through the 20th, 2019, as Local Government Week in the city of Brentwood in St. Louis County, and urge all Missourians to join in recognizing local governments as they serve their communities in recognition of Local Government Week in the city of Brentwood, Missouri, presented this first day of April, 2019.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, it's Local Government Week all the time for us, so, uh, but I encourage y'all to get out and do local government if, uh, if the spirit moves you. Uh, all right, uh, second up on tonight's agenda for B is an Eagle Scout proclamation and, uh, we have a proclamation here for you.
Okay.
Uh, Alderman Kramer, if you'd please read the proclamation.
Yes, sir. This is the proclamation, "Starting whereas the Boy Scouts of America was founded on February 8th, 1910. It's grown to be a vital force in the development of our youth through its Benny programs, which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and for others. Whereas Sean Segastur has been an active member of the Boy Scout Troop 361 sponsored by St. Mary Magdalene Parish since March 2012. And whereas Sean has worked in the scouting program through the ranks of Scout, Tenderfoot, Second Class, First Class, Star, and Life ranks, and served in leadership positions, and is a Brotherhood Member of the Order of the Arrow. And whereas Sean has completed hours of community service, taking part in 115 nights camping and 87 miles hiking, and he also completed the Leave No Trace Achievement Award. Whereas Sean completed his Eagle Scout Award on December 5th of last year, 2018, by organizing and leading his crew in the construction of a memorial rock garden for St. Mary Magdalene Church. And now whereas through his active community involvement and good citizenship, Sean has demonstrated his personal character of living, the Scout oath, and law in his daily life and has shown to be an asset of our Brentwood community through his community service. And so therefore I, Mayor Christopher Thornton, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Brentwood, Missouri, and on behalf of the full Board of Aldermen for the city of Brentwood, do hereby congratulate Eagle Scout Sean Segastur for his accomplishments and further urge everyone to continue to support the Boy Scouts of America and their endeavors."
Thank you very much. I just wanna say, I was a Boy Scout myself, yeah. (APPLAUSE) I was just gonna say, I was a Boy Scout myself and I, I, I bowed out at the, uh, rank of Star Scout, I think it was, or Life. Uh, but, but I gotta, I, I'm always very jealous of the guys who, well, jealous, not the right word, um, impressed with the guys who go through and all, and pursue it all the way to Eagle. It's a really big deal, it's a lot of work, and I think, uh, it says a lot about your character, so, congratulations. Uh, item eleven, or sorry, four C, this evening, we have a proclamation for the Brentwood Robotics Team. And, uh, if you don't mind, Alderman Kramer, I'm gonna read this one myself.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, for those of you who don't know, the Brentwood Robotics Team, uh, started, what, about three, three years ago? Five years ago. And, uh, what they do is they, uh, they enter these competitions where they build robots that are to complete, um, difficult tasks and so they don't know what the tasks are, or they have only sort of a vague notion. They build the robots to go and complete these tasks and these competitions are actually quite competitive. And our, our Brentwood Robotics Team, or one of our Brentwood Robotics Team that was entered in the most recent regional competition, won the regional competition and then competed in the state competition, RALA, and they placed third. So it's a really big deal, uh, really great, and, and especially after only having a team together for about five years, that's just fantastic. So, this is the proclamation in honor of the team. Uh, whereas Brentwood High School started a robotics team in 2013 comprised of students, coaches, mentors, and whereas, the Brentwood Robotics Team has two teams registered with four inspiration and recognition, uh, recognition of science technology first, team number seventy-five, twenty-five, Nerdy Birds, and team number eighty-eight, ninety-five, the Asteroids. And whereas, first was founded in 1989 to inspire young people to be science and technology leaders, and whereas, the robotics team participated, participates in the annual first technology challenge, which requires them to design and build a robot that competes against other robots to complete complicated challenges. And whereas, participation in the robotics team has continued to increase and there are multiple robots entered into the competitions. And whereas, the Nerdy Birds won the 2019 regional first competition and advanced to the Missouri State Finals for the first time in school history where they took third place. And whereas, robotics is very much a team sport and one of the few sports in which everyone can go pro. And whereas, the Nerdy Birds and Asteroids have demonstrated gracious professionalism and co-operation, which is very essential, uh, in all of their competitions. And whereas, the Nerdy Birds and Asteroids have carefully studied Asimov's Three Laws of Robotics and have sworn to uphold them in the design and construction of all their robotic creations. Whereas, the city of Brentwood regards all robots as friends and will warmly welcome them when the inevitable takeover happens. Uh, I, and now therefore I, Mayor Christopher Thornton, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Brentwood and on behalf of the Board of Aldermen for the city of Brentwood, do hereby congratulate the Brentwood High School Robotics Team on their ability to build awesome robots and wish them continued success in future first robotics competitions. Uh, the members of the team are Amelia, boy, I'm gonna butcher these names, so, Ayody?
Ayah.
Ayah, okay, very good. Ben Brown, Mark Devon, Jaya, Jaya, or Jaya?
Jaya.
Jaya Green, Ben Greiner, Quinton Kirsh, Morgan Nelson... Shaqena? Am I close?
Jaya.
Shaqena, Shaqena Reed, Maya Seb... Sabah? Sabah, I'm sorry, I told you I was gonna do it. Uh, Matthew Sig... Matthew Sig... I'm gonna get it wrong, say it again.
Can build us a name-reading robot.
Yeah, we're gonna build a name-reading robot. Segast... Segastur. Yeah, Segastur. Sean Segastur and Isabel Smith. Thank you, Isabel. Uh, yeah, so I'd like to, uh, bring them up one by one to receive a certificate, so, uh... (APPLAUSE)
This is good.
First one I've got is for Amelia.
Yep.
And it doesn't have...
Good, this is good.
Congratulations.
Ben?
All right.
Mark? Ayah, Jaya. Ben? Greiner? Yes. Quinton? Morgan Nelson? Oh, she pushed me. Mark? Dave Smart? Ayah, Bam? Matthew? And Sean? Isabel?
Mayor.
Oh, yeah, we, we're... All right, so, this is...
We also have Lily Airin on.
Oh, I'm sorry!
Well, we'll get it resolved.
Yeah, well, oh, don't worry, we'll get it resolved, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
This is the Brentwood Robotics Team and, and for those of you who might be wondering, I'm gonna make an assumption that this is Major. Major Malfunction is the, uh, is the third-place winning robot.
Like that was something Weggie thought of.
And I think, yeah, I think it should be in the picture with everyone.
Yep.
Uh, so, is he, is he mobile?
No.
Well, they're not gonna be overlords anytime soon. But, uh, I, I also wanted to say that, that, uh, we, we had a, uh, a little bit of a whip around in the back and we've decided that Major Malfunction honored a citizen of Brentwood, uh, for 2019.
Good job, guys. Very good. And, and do I see a boy-girl split here amongst the teams? Yeah, so, girls, next year, we wanna see you up here, uh, with the winning robot? Yeah, all right. (APPLAUSE) All right, um, fun stuff's over. Uh, you can, you, you, you certainly can and we welcome you to stay for the rest of the meeting. Uh, but we also understand if you, uh, have better things to do. Not that I'm suggesting there would be anything better to do on a Monday night, but...
Congratulations.
Come vote tomorrow.
Yeah, don't forget, vote tomorrow.
I'm parked where I'm supposed to be.
All right. All right, very good. Uh, all right, so, on with, uh, tonight's meeting. We have two public hearings scheduled for tonight. This is, um, yeah, we will definitely get you worked out. Don't, don't worry, anybody who didn't get a correct certificate, we will absolutely make sure that you have one. Um, we have two public hearings scheduled tonight. Number five on the agenda is case number nineteen dash oh seven. It's a public hearing to consider amendment of a conditional use permit and site plan review to amend the CUP for Brentwood Square to allow a second restaurant for the property's own PD Plan Development Overlay District and located at 1507 South Brentwood Boulevard. Is there more on that, Tom, or is that about it?
That's pretty much it, your honor. It's just, this is the second restaurant. Folks have asked a lot about what the name of it is and it's first watch.
Okay. Very good, so, uh, uh, right now, I'm gonna gavel in the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen regarding this application for a conditional use permit, uh, please come forward and you will be heard.
My name's Evan Barnett, I'm with Pace Properties, representing the, uh, property owner. Um, just don't really have anything to address. I think the documented, and, you know, all of us have in front of us is, um, something that we're all gonna be able to, to work towards, you know, getting put in place, uh, just some cleanup items. If you guys have any questions for me, that's why I wanted to stand up and see if you guys had any questions I needed to address.
We typically wouldn't take those at the public hearing.
Gotcha.
Uh, when we take action on the bill, we can certainly, we can certainly do that if it's helpful to the board.
Sounds good.
Anyone else care to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen, uh, regarding this application? Yes, ma'am?
Um, I am a longtime member, uh, resident of Brentwood Forest. I live right behind Brentwood Square.
Okay.
And I just would express, um, disagreement adding more right there until some issues are resolved. Um, noise is one and traffic is another. Um, my windows face east and I've been moking up numerous times, I don't know if it's against an ordinance, but one o'clock in the morning, I hear street sweepers and lawn blowers out in that parking lot at Brentwood Square. I'm on the northeast side. Um, the other is traffic, in and out of that place, especially on a Saturday, is, is horrible. Um, there are no, at Rose and Strassner, no left turn signals at either of those places, either direction onto Brentwood. Gets very backed up and I see missed accidents constantly. Um, up, on the Eager side, they're not supposed to take a left turn onto westbound Eager out of that north exit, but happens all the time. I almost got in a head-on collision the other day because some guy was doing that, ended up in the wrong lane. And eastbound Eager, that light across Brentwood is just too short, gets very stacked up and again, people are just running red lights constantly and, um, putting people in jeopardy. So until, I would think those should be addressed before we add more to that site right now, I would be opposed to that.
Okay, thank you.
Name?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, what was your name again?
I'm sorry, Mary.
Mary K. Leary, thank you. Anyone else care to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen regarding this conditional use permit application? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Our second public hearing this evening is case number nineteen dash oh eight. Uh, it's a public hearing to consider amendment of a conditional use permit and site plan to review the amended, and amend the CUP for a hotel, property zoned UD Urban Development District and located at 1695 South Hanley Road. If, uh, well, I'm gonna open the public hearing. If anyone would care to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen regarding this application, uh, do so and you will be heard. If you can get to the microphone.
He's making sure it's working.
Oh, well, then, then you may be heard. Talk loudly and you will be heard.
I can do that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen, Mr. O'Keefe, members of the city staff. Uh, my name is Robert Goldtruman. I'm a lawyer at the law firm of Lewis Rice, 600 Washington Avenue, Suite 2500, St. Louis, Missouri, 63101. I'm here tonight representing the owners of the property at 1699 Hanley, uh, which most of you will recognize as being the, uh, the building and lot, uh, for the Wheeland Security, uh, business and several other tenants that occupy, uh, that building. Uh, my client has two concerns with the, uh, proposed amended site plan. One is the parking requirements and two is the landscape plan. Uh, with respect to parking, the original, uh, site plan for this project included a multi-story covered parking garage. The amended site plan now provides for surface parking only. The new plan eliminates, uh, the parking garage and proposes 102 surface parking spaces. Brentwood's code requires 131 surface parking spaces for this type of development. Uh, the applicant is requesting a 20% reduction in that code requirement. The city's consultant, CBB, provided a report in February that concluded 115 spaces would be quote-unquote "comfortable." But that report also correctly pointed out that if that parking lot is full, the overflow is gonna end up on the Wheeland Security site. Based on CBB's initial report, the staff recommended, uh, a site plan to include 115 parking spaces and this recommendation was presented to the Planning and Zoning Site Plan Subcommittee on the, on February 22nd. On the day before this matter was to return to the full Planning and Zoning Committee, CBB provided a revised report, now concluding that 101 surface parking spaces would be quote-unquote "comfortable." The revision, according to the report, was based on additional input from the developer, although it's not clear from the report what that additional input in fact was. One thing we do know from the report is that CBB revised some of its assumptions in terms of what would be an adequate amount of parking. For instance, CBB, uh, decided that the ratio of, uh, mode of transportation, private autos versus some other form of transportation, that 75% would be private auto and 25% would be other modes of transportation to get to and from the hotel. In the original report, the assumption was that 85% would be private auto and 15% would be other modes of transportation. So that was a significant change that resulted in part in a reduction in the recommended number of parking spaces. This revised report was then presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 13th and the site plan was approved with 102 parking spaces. CBB's revised calculation was also flawed because CBB...
... The third place winning robot.
Like that was something Reggie thought of.
And I think, yeah, I don't think you should be in the picture with everyone.
Yep.
Uh, so, is he, is he mobile?
No.
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 Major malfunction.
Well, they're not going to be overlords anytime soon.
No.
Uh, but, uh, I, I also wanted to say that, that, uh, we, we had a, uh, a little bit of a whip around in back and we've decided to major malfunction. Honorary citizen of Brentwood, uh, for 2019.
Good job, guys. Very good.
Thank you.
And, and do I see a boy-girl split here amongst the teams? Yeah, so, girls, next year, we want to see you up here, uh, with the winning robot? Yeah? All right.
Thank you.
All right. Um, fun stuff's over. Uh, you can, you, you, you certainly can, and we welcome you to stay for the rest of the meeting, uh, but we also understand if you, uh, have better things to do. Not that I'm suggesting there would be anything better to do on a Monday night, but...
Congratulations.
Come vote tomorrow.
Yeah, don't forget, vote tomorrow.
I'm parked where I'm supposed to be.
All right. All right, very good. Uh, all right, so, on with, uh, tonight's meeting. We have two public hearings scheduled for tonight. This is, um, yeah, we will definitely get you worked out. Don't, don't worry, anybody who didn't get a correct certificate, we will absolutely make sure that you have one. Um, we have two public hearings scheduled tonight. Number five on the agenda is case number nineteen dash oh seven. It's a public hearing to consider amendment of a conditional use permit and site plan review to amend the CUP for Brentwood Square to allow a second restaurant for the property's own PD Plan Development Overlay District and located at fifteen oh seven South Brentwood Boulevard. Is there more on that, Tom, or is that about it?
That's pretty much it, Your Honor. It's just, this is the second restaurant. Folks have asked a lot about what the name of it is, and it's first watch.
Okay. Very good. So, uh, uh, right now, I'm going to gavel in the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen regarding this application for a conditional use permit, uh, please come forward and you will be heard.
My name's Evan Barnett. I'm with Pace Properties, representing the, uh, property owner. Um, just don't really have anything to address. I think the documented, and, you know, all of us have in front of us is, um, something that we're all going to be able to, to work towards, you know, getting put in place, uh, just some cleanup items. If you guys have any questions for me, that's why I wanted to stand up and see if you guys had any questions I needed to address.
We typically wouldn't take those at the public hearing.
Gotcha.
Uh, but when we take action on the bill, we can certainly, we can certainly do that if it's helpful to the board.
Sounds good.
Anyone else care to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen, uh, regarding this application? Yes, ma'am?
Um, I am a longtime member, uh, resident of Brentwood Forest. I live right behind Brentwood Square.
Okay.
And I just would express, um, disagreement adding more right there until some issues are resolved. Noise is one, and traffic is another. Um, my windows face east, and I've been moking up numerous times, I don't know if it's against an ordinance, but one o'clock in the morning, I hear street sweepers and lawn blowers out in that parking lot at Brentwood Square. I'm on the northeast side. Um, the other is traffic, in and out of that place, especially on a Saturday, is, is horrible. Um, there are no, at Rose and Strassner, no left turn signals at either of those places, either direction onto Brentwood, gets very backed up, and I see missed accidents constantly. Um, up, on the eager side, they're not supposed to take a left turn onto westbound eager out of that north exit, but happens all the time. I almost got in a head-on collision the other day because some guy was doing that, ended up in the wrong lane. And eastbound eager, that light across Brentwood is just too short, gets very stacked up, and again, people are just running red lights constantly and, um, putting people in jeopardy. So, until, I would think those should be addressed before we add more to that site right now, I would be opposed to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Name?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, what was your name again?
I'm sorry, Mary.
Mary Kay Leary. Thank you. Anyone else care to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen regarding this conditional use permit application? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Our second public hearing this evening is case number nineteen dash oh eight. Uh, it's a public hearing to consider amendment of a conditional use permit and site plan to review the amended, and amend the CUP for a hotel, property's owned UD Urban Development District and located at sixteen ninety-five South Hanley Road. If, uh, well, I'm going to open the public hearing. If anyone would care to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen regarding this conditional use permit application? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Our second public hearing this evening is case number nineteen dash oh eight. Uh, it's a public hearing to consider amendment of a conditional use permit and site plan to review the amended, and amend the CUP for a hotel, property's owned UD Urban Development District and located at sixteen ninety-five South Hanley Road. If, uh, well, I'm going to open the public hearing. If anyone would care to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen regarding this application, uh, do so, and you will be heard. If you can get to the microphone.
He's making sure it's working.
Oh, well, then, then you may be heard. Talk loudly, and you will be heard.
I can do that.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen, Mr. O'Keefe, members of the city staff, my name is Robert Goldtriman. I'm a lawyer at the law firm of Lewis Rice, six hundred Washington Avenue, Suite twenty five hundred, St. Louis, Missouri, six three one oh one. I'm here tonight representing the owners of the property at sixteen ninety-nine Hanley, which most of you will recognize as being the, uh, the building and lot, uh, for the Whelan Security, uh, business and several other tenants that occupy, uh, that building. Uh, my client has two concerns with the, uh, proposed amended site plan. One is the parking requirements, and two is the landscape plan. Uh, with respect to parking, the original, uh, site plan for this project included a multi-story covered parking garage. The amended site plan now provides for surface parking only. The new plan eliminates, uh, the parking garage and proposes one hundred and two surface parking spaces. Brentwood's code requires a hundred and thirty-one surface parking spaces for this type of development. Uh, the applicant is requesting a twenty percent reduction in that code requirement. The city's consultant, CBB, provided a report in February that concluded a hundred and fifteen spaces would be quote-unquote "comfortable." But that report also correctly pointed out that if that parking lot is full, the overflow is going to end up on the Whelan Security site. Based on CBB's initial report, the staff recommended, uh, a site plan to include one hundred and fifteen parking spaces, and this recommendation was presented to the Planning and Zoning Site Plan Subcommittee on the, on February twenty-second. On the day before this matter was to return to the full planning and zoning committee, CBB provided a revised report, now concluding that a hundred and one surface parking spaces would be quote-unquote "comfortable." The revision, according to the report, was based on additional input from the developer, although it's not clear from the report what that additional input, in fact, was. One thing we do know from the report is that CBB revised some of its assumptions in terms of what would be an adequate amount of parking. For instance, CBB, uh, decided that the ratio of, uh, mode of transportation, private autos versus some other form of transportation, that seventy-five percent would be private auto and twenty-five percent would be other modes of transportation to get to and from the hotel. In the original report, the assumption was that eighty-five percent would be private auto and fifteen percent would be other modes of transportation. So, that was a significant change that resulted in part in a reduction in the recommended number of parking spaces. This revised report was then presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on March thirteenth, and the site plan was approved with a hundred and two parking spaces. CBB's revised calculation was also flawed because CBB took into consideration the fact that there would be no restaurant or meeting space at this particular hotel. However, according to the city code, uh, if a hotel has meeting space or a restaurant, then additional parking over and above the minimum required by the code is required. So, the requirement would be more than one hundred and thirty-one spaces. Therefore, the absence of these two other uses is not a basis for going below the minimum required by the code. The second concern is landscaping. The city hired Planning Design Studios to review the new landscape plan. Planning Design Studios concluded that there should be a five-foot minimum landscape buffer between the hotel lot and the adjoining or abutting properties. The site plan now shows a one-foot wide landscape buffer between my client, sixteen ninety-nine site, and the hotel lot. Now, I don't know what you're going to put in a one-foot landscape buffer.
Really tiny bushes.
But probably not much. And I, it would be our suggestion that the greater the buffer, landscape buff, buffer, the least, the, the less likely it is that there's going to be spillover from one development to another development. So, we think it would be prudent to require, uh, the maximum, uh, landscape buffer. And finally, to, with respect to parking, it, i- i- if it's going to be a razor-thin margin of parking, uh, we certainly envision issues. Uh, there's not, there's not extra parking on the, on the Whelan Security lot. The tenants and the Whelan Security business use those parking spaces, uh, and if they're not available, uh, then we're going to have, we're going to have issues. So, we would, we would respectfully request that when this matter comes back in two weeks for consideration of legislation, uh, that these concerns would be taken into account. And I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else care to come forward and address the board on this application? No other comments on this application? Very good. Uh, could I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing until the next meeting, please?
It's all moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this public hearing until the meeting of April fifteenth. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of, uh, uh, adjourning this public hearing until the April fifteenth meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, by unanimous vote, we will adjourn the public hearing, and we will take it up again at the April fifteenth meeting. Um, great. Citizen comments? If anyone would care to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen, if you would please state your name, and if you're comfortable, your address, and you will have at least three minutes to speak to the Board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Board of Aldermen, city attorney and staff, my name is Mike Doster. I'm the land use attorney representing Life Storage. We appeared before you in a previous meeting, and I believe my client has also appeared at the planning commission level with respect to item ten on old business, which is bill number sixty-two thirty-three. And I understand, as of today, that there are three versions of that bill that may be discussed by you this evening. Regardless of which version of the bill that you ultimately move forward on, we have been requesting that a conditional use be added to the list of conditional uses in the bill that would allow for the expansion or renovation of existing, existing self-storage facilities within the district. My client supports what you're doing with respect to the district, uh, and sees it as a favorable, uh, change, which, uh, ironically, will probably increase, uh, the business that my client will experience regardless of whether or not the property is renovated or expanded. However, uh, my client, being a national, uh, storage facility developer and operator, uh, has standards which very much match the standards that you are adopting with respect to the, the district, and would like to upgrade the property and renovate it, uh, and expand it, uh, and in order to do so, we're asking that that renovation and expansion, uh, be added as a conditional use. By adding it as a potential conditional use, it doesn't mean that you're approving it, and in our view, it doesn't mean you're approving the self-storage facility as a permitted or conditional use within the district. You're merely allowing us a vehicle by which we can petition the city, uh, to approve a renovation, expansion, uh, or, uh, upgrading of the facilities, uh, in accordance with the standards that the city will be establishing in the district. Right now, there is really no effective vehicle for, for us to do that. Uh, there are very severe limitations under the, uh, legal non-conforming use ordinance, uh, which do not work, uh, for us, uh, and we have tried to obtain a variance before, uh, and that, that didn't work. So, we're looking for an opportunity, frankly, to move forward with the kind of upgrading and renovating and standards that you are, uh, looking forward to in the, in the district that you're, uh, going to establish. I did not see in two of the versions that I have looked at that this, uh, requested language has been added. So, it's our request this evening that, uh, the Board of Aldermen consider adding this language. And we have sent letters, I believe, to the Board of Aldermen, maybe, uh, two or three letters with the language included, but I also have it here, uh, and I'll read it to you, and I'm happy to pass this around if you want to see it. But simply, you would add a conditional, uh, use to the list of conditional uses in the bill, uh, and, uh, it looked like originally it would have been denominated as, uh, E-point one point S, but I think the letters may have changed with some of the revisions that have been, uh, done to the various versions that are before you. But the basic language would add this, uh, as a conditional use. Renovation, remodeling, rehabilitation, or expansion of self-storage facilities existing on the effective date of this ordinance. So, it would only apply to self-storage facilities that existed within the district as of the effective date of the passage of the bill, uh, and it would only allow for renovation, remodeling, rehabilitation, or expansion of that existing facility. We think this would not only be a good thing for us, obviously, but it would be a good thing for the city. If that facility is going to continue to exist in the district, I think you would want to see it renovated and upgraded, uh, to standards that were, uh, commensurate with the standards that will be applicable throughout the district. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, we typically don't do that during the comments, but if anybody has a response, they'll, they'll have a chance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come forward and address the board? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Dan Schwanz. I'm with Life Storage, uh, six four six seven Main Street, Buffalo, New York. Uh, I was here before you two weeks ago. I don't really have any more to add. I'm, you're probably sick of hearing me, from me at this point. Uh, I've sent letters to the effect, uh, that Mr. Doster spoke on. Um, I'd just like to reiterate my, my desire, Life Storage's desire, to have the chance to be part of this exciting rehabilitation of this area. And all we're seeking to do is, is be a part of it. We have a project, we have the finances, the backing to do it. So, that's all I have to add, and I'll be happy to answer questions, you know, later in the agenda when the issue comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come forward and address the Board of Aldermen? Any topic you like? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment until later in the meeting. Um, item number seven on the agenda is the reports of, uh, Mayor and the Aldermen. I actually do have a report tonight. Uh, I know you all have missed my, uh, my opportunities to, to report to you, but being that this is most likely my last meeting, uh, I, I couldn't let the opportunity go. So, uh, so tonight, I'm going to talk to you just a little bit about Brentwood bound. And really, you know, we, we have a vote tomorrow on Proposition B, and, and I'm hopeful that the voters will give us the approval to, uh, to, to consider the, this economic development sales tax at some point in the future. But, and a lot of people have, have said to me, you know, if, if we get this Proposition B passed, you know, things will really be, uh, all, you know, all taken care of from there. And, and I think to some extent, that's true, but I, but I want to, uh, I want to prognosticate a little bit because, um, I think there are still some pitfalls that could come, come up in the next year or two, uh, that I think are, um, things that we, we should probably avoid. And so, uh, what I want to do is, like I said, prognosticate a little bit about what those pitfalls might be and, and why I think there'd be good things for us to avoid in the future. The, the first one is, is I think, you know, there, there may be some feeling that, uh, we, we shouldn't get too far down the road until the clomer gets approved. Uh, and I think that that, uh, is, is not a, uh, a, a good thing to do. The first reason I think that is because our engineers are extremely confident that the clomer application that we've submitted will be approved pretty much as submitted. And I think the early feedback that we've gotten from, uh, from FEMA and that is, it's consistent with that. So, I don't think we have any reason to believe that the clomer won't be approved, uh, the clomer application won't be approved and the clomer issued. Uh, but, but I think there's some other reasons that we want to avoid kind of that, uh, that pitfall. And that is, uh, you know, if, if we, if we wait, you know, if we wait and, and put things on hold until a clomer actually issues, we lose about four months of planning time and design time that could be very profitably spent. And more importantly than that, if you look at the schedule that Craig, uh, has, what you do is you actually, if you take those four to six months and you add them on, what you do is you lose an entire construction season, basically. You lose a summer. And so, what you do is you end up, the, the net effect of that is by waiting three, you know, four, four months or even maybe five months to do this, uh, what you do is you push the entire project back because the summer's when most of that work's going to get done. When the rain starts and in the wintertime, uh, less of that work is going to be capable. And so, if you're not ready to start, you know, redoing the creek in twenty twenty, in the summer of twenty twenty, uh, you'll lose that entire year, uh, you'll lose the best, the best part of the construction season for that year. The second part is, is, you know, our, our property acquisition is critical to this project. Uh, if, if you ask Craig if there's any part of this that he's worried about, I think he would gladly tell you that it's the property acquisition that is still the long pole in the tent. And I think we've been proceeding aggressively on that, and I think we need to continue to proceed aggressively on that, uh, front. And, uh, you know, if you start talking about, well, holding back a little bit or waiting and seeing and stuff like that, you, you, you just make that long pole in the tent longer. Uh, the, 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 the other reasons are that the costs, uh, the, 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 the big, uh, things that would go on in that time period are, are engineering and planning, and the relatively low cost, right? Um, compared to like property acquisition, right? So, uh, and most of that work is not going to be wasted if, in the unlikely event that for some reason our clomer application would not be approved, uh, then, you know, that work's not wasted, it's just going to be reapplied and, and redone. So, i- i- it's, it's not like that money goes down the drain. The, the final thing I'd point out is that these projects are integrated. And if you start talking about, you know, holding back on a certain part of the project, uh, what will happen is, is that, you know, the projects that are going forward, like the Manchester Road Project, which is proceeding, right? Now, now you're going to have problems because, you know, one, one part of the team is working as if this is going to happen, the other part of the team is working as if it might not happen, uh, you're, you're going to create a lot of confusion on the project team, and you're going to make Ja, Craig's job, you know, three times harder as you do that. So, I, I think, you know, a- any, any idea that we should, you know, kind of wait and see what happens until the clomer issues is, is really a bad idea, and I would encourage you not to do that. Uh, you know, unless, uh, for example, the, the, the vote tomorrow is not in favor of Proposition B, in which case you might have to do that. Uh, but that's a different matter. Uh, all, all of these comments are, are on the assumption that, that Proposition B would be approved tomorrow, and obviously, if it's not, then that's a whole different ball of duty. Uh, the, the second thing I think you're going to have to deal with is you're going to have to deal with some feeling that the project costs are too high. Um, and I think, you know, to be, they'll come in the form of, do we really need X? Or can, uh, could, what could we do for less, right? We can do this much for, for seventy-nine million dollars, but for seventy-five million dollars, what can we do? Right? Um, and I, and those, those are, those objections are actually probably true to some extent, right? I mean, let's be honest, you can always, you know, you can always find a way to cut things out. Uh, but, but I don't, I think what you do is you run the risk of making, mistaking fear for prudence, right? So, so the idea is, is that, hey, I'm just being prudent, I want to make sure that we're doing this as, as cost-effectively as possible, but, but I don't think, I think what you want to do is you want to make sure that that's not fear talking, right? It, it's really prudence talking, not fear, right? Because, you know, the fear is we're borrowing a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but, but we're putting it to good use, I think. So, you know, I don't want to get those two things. The other thing is the biggest costs on this project are things that we're already well-committed to. I mean, property acquisition is by far the, one of the biggest costs of this project, and the other project costs are the construction of the creek, the actual digging and redoing of the creek. Those, the, the best way to cut the costs on the creek is to get the plan in place and bid it out, right? And bid it out at a, in a competitive fashion and get those costs down. Uh, but you don't want to, you know, those are the two big areas to save costs, and I don't think that you're going to be able to, to short shrift either one of them. If we, if we start trying to short, uh, property acquisition, uh, I think you're going to find that, that we may be inclined not to be fair with the business owners down there. I mean, that's the easiest way to save money when you're doing property acquisition by condemnation, is to say, well, we're just going to drive a hard bargain. Well, I, I don't think that's the way we've done it so far, and I don't think that's the way we should do it in the future. The other thing is, is that, you know, you can always save money by hiring the lowest-cost contractor, but sometimes that's not the best idea either. And what I mean by that is, if we, if we're going down this path, we definitely want to make sure that the flood control works, right? The worst thing we could do is, is save a little bit of money on, on bidding out the flood control and finding out that it doesn't work. And this, this one, I'm going to direct to Andy because I, I've, I'll, I'll take a comment, comment that he made. Uh, it, my, my, my comment is this, fluff can be useful, and, and often, it's quite desirable. And what I mean by that is, is look, uh, I, I have heard you describe parks and some other things as fluff, and, and I know what you're saying, I don't, I don't, I, I know how you intend that comment to be, but, but, but they are, they are useful things, and they're very desirable things. And I think if you, if you start trying to cut costs by cutting out fluff, uh, then you run the risk of making the project into something that's a lot more, uh, yeah, you might get the flooding fixed, but if, if, if Norm West Park looks like it did yesterday when we had our picnic out there when we're all done, and it doesn't flood, nobody's going to care. Uh, it really is. So, so I think, I, I would encourage you to, you know, to, to fight for a walkable, bikeable community that I think people want, right? And again, this assumes that, that they are willing to give us the funds to do these things. Um, so, you know, I think the final reason on, the final thing on that, the, the cutting costs is, is I think, uh, if you go too far down that road, and, and don't, don't mistake me, I, you know, I, we always have to be careful when we're spending other people's money. But we have an opportunity to hear something that's really unique and really great. And if we don't take that opportunity right now, we will miss that opportunity to do something unique and great. And we may wind up with something that, yeah, it works, but it won't be unique and it won't be great. And I, and I, I just think that if you miss that opportunity, you, you and the citizens of Brentwood will regret it in the future. Um, the final, oh, sorry, one last thing on that. We've, we've, we've received commitments and grants totaling a total of eight million so far for this project, right? Approximately ten percent of the project cost. We don't know how far we can go with grants, right? We, we really don't. So, a- again, you know, I think one of the reasons that we've been successful so far is that we've been committed to the project, and we've been committed to doing it in a certain way. And I think if you, if you stay true to that course, there's no telling what kind of additional grants and funding you might get from other sources that maybe aren't even visible right now, right? Because we're just not at that stage. The final thing I want to talk about a little bit is, and I hesitated to even mention this, but I have to, it's Better Together. Um, you know, and, and the, 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 the fear or the concerns that you might hear in that regard is, hey, we don't really know what will happen. And that's absolutely true. Uh, in fact, I would argue that there's a lot of people down at Better Together that don't really know what will happen, but that's a different issue. Um, you know, but the truth of the matter is, and, and, and again, I, I know you guys are just always thrilled to hear me give one of these reports, but, uh, I'm going to take you back to, uh, a couple of Board of Aldermen meetings we had, uh, two and a half, three years ago. And, and I said at those meetings, I said, this is going to be a really difficult project, right? It's going to be really hard, it's going to be a long, hard fight. And what I meant by that was, it's going to, there, there are always going to be these types of types of things, these types of concerns that come up, and, and they're valid, right? That, that's, you know, but, but it's tempting to say, hey, pull back and, hey, you know, maybe we should, um, maybe we shouldn't do that. But, but what happens is, is that you, you, you can't let that fear, that, uh, that inability to know the future stop you, because the truth is, you never really know the future. Uh, you know, we, uh, stock market crashes, 9/11, uh, you know, these are things that happened, you know, one day everything was fine, the next day everything changed, right? We, we never really know the future. And, and if you let that stop you, you're never really gonna get anywhere, because, you know, you, you just won't be able to do it. So, uh, you know, I, I would, I would argue, I would encourage the board to, to keep that in mind and, and, uh, you know, not let a plan to have a vote in 2020 on something that's likely to take two or three years after the vote, if it passes, uh, stop you from doing something that could make Brentwood a better place in the very near future. I, I just don't think that that's a, a, a way to do things. So, uh, and, and finally, the final comment on Better Together is, um, if it does end up passing and it does end up coming to pass, I feel very certain that we will never have this opportunity to do the things that we're doing now. Uh, I, I don't think under the combined city government that we will ever have the wherewithal to address this problem that affects mostly people that live right here in Brentwood, uh, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be in that situation. So, uh, you know, all of that is my way of saying to you, you know, I think we've done a wonderful job of being committed to this project so far. I think we've done a very good job of being prudent in our approach, but not overly cautious, and I would encourage you to continue that approach and, and, um, you know, and, and fight for something that is gonna be truly, truly unique and special to Brentwood, because it's a really, it's a great opportunity and I would hate to see us lose it. So, that's my report. Uh, Alderman, who've I got first? Hold on. Is it Alderman Dimmitt?
It is.
Alderman Dimmitt.
Uh, we're scheduled to have a Ways and Means meeting this Thursday, but we might postpone that for a week. Stay tuned.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Alderman Kramer.
No report at this time, Your Honor.
Alderman Leahy.
If I may, Your Honor, I have a few things to go forward with. Um, there is a vote tomorrow, please come out and participate, it is worthwhile. Ward Three's Rec Center activity, we will be doing a petition drive for the Board of Freeholders as an alternative to Better Together, so come, visit with us and spend some time getting an education. The Ward Three meeting for the month of April will be the 30th of April, Tuesday night, 7:00 PM in the Rec Center, all are invited. The Brentwood Parks Department is hosting a blood drive, and I'd love you to put it on your calendar for Friday, the 26th, from 2:00 to 7:00 PM at the Rec Center with the American Red Cross. There is a, always a demand for blood, and we would love to have as many people as we could come and participate. Your Honor, if I may respond to your Better Together request, Better Together is out there, and in a nutshell, under the state constitution, they are asking for a state constitutional amendment that in itself requires a statewide vote. There are currently three bills in the Missouri Legislature right now, working their way through the process, to try to bring that vote back to the city county residents, because they're the ones that would be affected by the change of government. Hasn't, not one of the three have made it anywhere to the point that it's open for discussion, but they are working on it to go after. The Board of Freeholders issue is something that was written in the state charter when they formed the city of St. Louis and the county to work with. It has been there for the last hundred years. Five times in the history, there has been a request to call the Board of Freeholders, but no meetings have ever taken place because of legal challenges. So it, it too is not a clear-cut way forward, but there are different options out there that are still being evaluated. Thank you, Your Honor.
Let's see, where are we at here? Alderman Lockwiler.
Public Works Committee will have their monthly meeting right here, next Wednesday, April 10th, at 4:30. Thank you.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yeah, says Library Leahson, I'd like to invite people to the evening get-together of readers on Friday, April 15th. This month's theme is appetizing books, and people are asked to bring an appetizing dish to share, read a book that has some food-related topic, and people really do sit and talk about books. It's a fun evening, and we'd love to have our people join us.
So Silence of the Lambs, for example.
Very nice Baba Beans.
No report.
Uh, Alderwoman Sims.
No report.
Alderman Waggy.
No report.
All right, very good. Uh, City, Madam City Administrator, or Assistant City Administrator, how we doing?
Sounds good.
You're gonna introduce Mr. Schluter? He's already edging towards the microphone anyway. Let's recognize Craig Schluter.
Good evening, Craig Schluter with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound update, uh, for tonight. Uh, so it was a very short warrant list. Uh, there were no recent investment costs or direct project costs. Uh, there were two recent indirect or sunk costs, and those include the Brentwood Bound Communication Consulting and the property acquisition legal fees. Total spend to date is $1,077,391.41. Any questions?
Any questions? Uh, but Alderman Plufka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Craig, with regard to, uh, the next item on the agenda, there's an audit of, um, proceeds from the Certificate of Participation from October to December 31st. Have you had a chance to look at that, any of the findings contained within that audit?
I just got the report right before the meeting, um, so if it's okay with you, I'd like to go through this whole report, and I can report back in two weeks.
Well, here's my question.
Sure.
To take with you, I guess.
Sure.
The second to last item and the bullet points indicates about $155,000 spent with regard to various, um, things that did not make it through the warrant list but were nevertheless invoiced. And I'm, my curiosity is whether or not the report you just gave reflects those costs as well.
Um, unlikely, but I would like to go through my report and just to verify that.
Very good.
So I don't, um, report anything, uh, not factual.
That's the only question.
But I will come back in two weeks and make sure it's all, um, up to date.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for Mr. Schluter? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 8B, uh, the, the aforementioned report.
Yes, I would like to, at this point, uh, go ahead and recognize, uh, Finance Director Karen Shaw, who can introduce the consultants that worked on this project.
All right, Director Shaw.
We have two representatives from KEB who prepared or had something to do with this audit. They are Gina Cochran and Courtney Cannon. They are going to report on their findings. They probably can't answer questions as to why, they are just gonna be reporting as it is a, um, agreed-upon procedure audit, which is a little different than the other audits. So I will turn it over to them.
Hi, my name is Gina Cochran, I'm a partner with Kerber Eckenbreckle. Um, just to, to mention, it is not an audit per se, but it is agreed-upon procedures in that the Board of Aldermen and the mayor agreed to three specific procedures related to, um, the 2018 Certificate of Participation expenditures and the use of those proceeds. Uh, and we performed specific procedures related to those three different, uh, items that were agreed upon, uh, between the mayor and the Board of Aldermen. So, um, as aforementioned, our audit, our, our agreed-upon procedures engagement covered the period October 1st of 2018 through December 31st of 2018. It covers, um, obviously this Manchester renewal project that there's been some mention of. Uh, and to report on that, um, we did look at requests number one through 11 during that period of time. There were 94 invoices totaling $1.6 million that we looked at. And again, those three steps that were agreed upon between the mayor and the Board of Aldermen were to compare the invoices to the contracts approved by the Board of Aldermen. Uh, number two is enumerated in the report, to examine those invoices and make sure that the city's, um, procedures and internal controls were followed. And the third was to review those invoices and make sure they were covered expenses related to the COP project. So I'm gonna have Courtney just explain, um, that second step was kind of broad in nature, so she's gonna go through the 12 different steps and the procedures that we kinda checked the box and made sure we looked at documentation to, just so you have a feel of what we actually touched and looked at during that process, then I'm gonna cover the findings. So Courtney, and Courtney, um, did a lot of the deep dive level testing, um, that we looked at, so that's why I'm having her cover the steps.
Good evening. So we examined the supporting documentation for the following 12 attributes. First, we agreed the amount of the invoice with the amount on the warrant list, with the amount on the capital form, which is required for items over $500, and with the amount on the canceled check, that is, if the invoice was paid directly by the city. Second, we checked for invoice payment approval by the department head and the finance director on the check request form, and we ensured the invoice was stamped and dated as paid if the invoice was paid directly by the city. Third, for items over $500, we checked the capital form for approval of the, by the department head, the finance director, and the city administrator. Fourth, we agreed the amount and payee per the invoice to the check detail report, which is approved by the finance director and city administrator, if the invoice was paid directly by the city. Fifth, if the invoice was paid directly by UMB Bank, we ensured the invoice and the vendor were listed appropriately on the written request for dispersment form, that is, the schedule of payments requested, that is attached to the signed form of requisition certificate for project costs form. Sixth, we ensured the warrant lists were approved by the Board of Aldermen. Seventh, for professional servants, services, we ensured three proposals were obtained. Eighth, for professional services, we ensured contracts in excess of $5,000 were approved by the Board of Aldermen. Ninth, for non-professional services, we ensured bids were obtained in accordance with city policy. Tenth, we ensured all real estate purchases were approved by the Board of Aldermen. Eleventh, we ensured the nature of the item purchased was consistent with the Certificate of Participation official statement. And twelfth, we compared the invoice to the contract to ensure the reasonableness of services provided and costs incurred.
You can see there that, obviously, we touched a lot of different documents during that process. So, uh, in these, uh, in this report are enumerated findings. Um, under number one, which is where we compared the invoices to signed contracts, so we did, um, no exceptions there in that we, um, obtained signed contracts for all invoices with the exception of purchases made from sole service providers, purchases made on the open market of less than $2,000, purchase requiring quick turnaround is communicated by management and is, uh, allowed by your purchasing code, and then also purchases from subcontractors, where the contractor, uh, worked with those subcontractors, um, and so we didn't need a, a special contract related to those services. So again, no exceptions in that item. In number two, uh, the second step is examining the invoices for the city of Brentwood's policies and internal controls. You can see that's where we've got six different exceptions in our testing. Four of those relate to exceptions in the capital form process, um, and one of them relates to an exception in the check request form process. And then lastly, uh, we've got one that is, uh, an exception where a contract was not, uh, obtained and a, uh, bid process was not followed related to, um, a couple of invoices also. So, uh, just to specifically go through the first bullet point there, we had a capital form that was, uh, signed by the finance director and the city administrator, but no department director signed off on that capital form. All of our other testing related to that invoice, uh, were either checked off or they were not applicable. The first bullet point on, on the second page, again, a capital form for a $33,000 invoice, um, that was signed by BOLA as both a department director and as the city administrator, but no finance director approval was on that. Again, the other procedures were performed on that. The second bullet pi- point there, um, is the check request form that I mentioned before. That's a small invoice, but again, uh, it had the finance director and the, the development director's signature only on that invoice. The third bullet point down, capital form was not completed at all for a $4,000 invoice, but there were other, again, those other steps in that process were, uh, evaluated and, and no exceptions there on that one. Uh, the second to last, uh, bullet point is the capital form for six different invoices totaling $156,000. That was on request one, and also the transactions, as mentioned previously, were not included on the warrant list for board approval, uh, and paid. And we've enumerated those specific, uh, items to that exception and what those amounts and the payees were for. We also had one exception, uh, that very last one, like I mentioned before, is where a contract was not obtained and the bid process was not completed, um, for a sole source provider that was communicated to us, and that was related to a billboard, uh, in the project area. Um, and although it was approved by the Board of Aldermen, it was approved subsequent to, and the purchasing code requires the approval by the, uh, Board of Aldermen prior to entering into those purchases. Then the last step is examining the invoices for proper payment, uh, as allowed by the COP, and, uh, as indicated there, we had no exceptions in the 94 invoices, uh, related to allowability of expenditures.
All right, thank you. Uh, would it be all right if, uh, the Alderman asked a few questions?
Absolutely.
Yep, okay, so Alderman Plufka.
Well, I have a question, but it's a why question, so I don't know that it's, could be directed to you.
Yeah, I don't know that we can answer whys.
I have a question, I guess, for, for Lisa, who's sitting in for our city administrator, um, tonight, and, and it's a pretty simple question. We had $155,000, almost $156,000 dollars worth of invoices that failed to go through the warrantless process. That's our only Board of Aldermen oversight, and I'm just curious as to why that agreed-upon procedure wasn't followed with regard to those six invoices.
When you mentioned that amount, I was listening to our, um, can, or auditors, so would that be the?
It's the second to last bullet point.
Yes, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Bullet point number five. Actually, I can speak to that, cuz I'm, 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 I don't wanna say I'm aware of the situation, this is the first I've actually know about, but, but I, I, I do recall a conversation that bore on this point, so let me, let me shed that light on it.
Okay.
Uh, you'll note that it's request number one, we had just established the COP money. Uh, I believe that these expenses you see here are all related to the closing, and I think there was some confusion as to whether or not those costs were actually paid out at the closing of the transaction, as opposed to by the, uh, by the city with the funds. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand why that difference would cause it not to appear on the warrant.
Well, because the, you never saw an invoice for, uh, Stiefel. They just took their money out of the proceeds, and they deposited the rest in the bank account. Now, I understand what you're saying, and there's no reason we should issue a check to somebody for $100,000 without the board's approval.
Sure.
I, I, I completely understand that, but you can see where there would be confusion, and that, I, I, like I said, I'm not making excuses, I'm just trying to shed light on it.
Okay.
But, but I do recall a conversation sometime around the time that we actually closed about, there was some confusion once the fund was established, what could be paid out of it, et cetera, et cetera, and there were all, if you recall, a number of these, I think it was you, actually, that made a motion to pay back some expenses to the city?
Right.
That, and all of that happened very quickly after the closing of the transaction. I'm not saying it wasn't a mistake, I'm not saying it's not wrong, I'm simply telling you what I know about the situation, and I do believe, if you look at every single one of these expenses, they are related to the actual closing of the transaction.
Well, and let's be clear, I'm not trying to make more out of this than?
No, no, not at all.
What we should, uh, but I am concerned that the last bullet point item is one we've already discussed.
Yeah, I, I.
Obviously.
I mean, I'm happy to.
And I'm not trying, I don't wanna rehash that, but my, my concern about this is that, is that, you know, we, we're gonna be asking? about this is that, is that, you know, we, we're going to be asking in less than 24 hours, the citizens of this community to trust us with regard to oversight, with regard to potentially as much as 70 or 75 million dollars of expenditures, and I'm, I'm glad that the audit caught this, and I'm glad for the work that you did, but it causes some concern as to whether or not, and, and why perhaps, and, and maybe your explanation is exactly what we'll, we'll hear, but I'm just, I'm just concerned that the, that the agreed upon procedures weren't followed.
I agree 100%. Like I said, I'm not offering it as explanation or even excuse, it's simply, I, I do believe that was the situation under which this occurred, and like I said, it is, it is expense number, request number, it's the very first checks we wrote out of this account.
Right.
So it's not an excuse, it's simply an explanation of what I believe happened. Now, that mean, doesn't mean that we shouldn't dig into it further, and I think Bola should give us a report on this next week as to how and what happened exactly, and Karen, I'm sure can do the same, so.
Well, with that in mind, that answers my question. I appreciate it.
All right. Alderman Dimmick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just by way of background, I, I think the genesis of this is I was meeting with our director of finance and our city administrator back in the fall as, as chair of Ways and Means, and I had some real concerns about the, the money that was being spent out of the COP. It seemed to be going really fast, and I was concerned that things were going faster than I could keep up with, and the suggestion was, well, let's go ahead and, and let's have somebody take a look at this and to, to ensure, it's, it's not a slight against staff that they couldn't be doing this, but just since we're talking about millions of dollars, we just wanted to make sure we had another set of eyes looking at that. So I, I'm glad that we have this, but I do have some questions, and hopefully they're not why questions, and hopefully you'll be able to answer them, but the first one is, I just want to make sure, so Lisa, can you direct that to Bola to answer Alderman Plufka's question about how it is that $155,000 doesn't come to this board for spending out of the COP money? If it's on the closing, I completely understand that, but it, you know, I think we do need to get some clarification on that.
Just to be clear on that, it, it, it's my belief...
No, I understand.
There was confusion, right?
Right.
It ended up not being a part of the closing, which is why we wrote the checks, I'm sure.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
But the, you, you mentioned that contracts under your first finding, your first bullet point, purchases requiring a quick turnaround as allowed under Purchasing Code Section 135-110. Now, I've looked at 135-110, and it doesn't seem to allow for that. Looks like 135-120 has a, has a provision in there that allows, there's, there's an exception, and that's what we've always referred to as an emergency. Is that what you're referring to?
I don't have that with me right now, we may have misquoted that.
And that, and that's fine, and, and under 135-120, under Professional Services subsection seven, there's an exception that says that there, under certain circumstances, we can, we can avoid the, the normal procedure for hiring professional services. And one of those is, I apologize for my, my voice, but I'm a little under the weather, reasons for exceptions may include an emergency situation which precludes a selection timeframe of at least two months, or an extremely specialized need in which there is only one feasible source of expertise. If it appears there is a need or an exception to the policy, the city clerk slash administrator will inform the mayor and Board of Aldermen to allow them the opportunity to deny the exception. Now, I don't recall ever having anybody come to this board and saying, and, and operating under that section, saying, "We want to invoke this, this subsection." Were, were you told that, that, that the ones where you've got listed here, purchases requiring a quick turnaround, were you told that that section was followed?
I believe there was one instance, yes.
Do you remember which one that was?
We do have our, we have our complete testing results here, which we're have, more than happy to share with the Board of Aldermen if that's something that they wish to have.
Absolutely.
Not sure if I can pinpoint exactly which one it is. I did take some notes, if you want to look, and I'll look at my notes that I have. A quick turnaround was Formax printing for postcards, printing and postage.
Okay, and the amount of what?
Formax, it was Q under the exception list.
Okay. And we had discussed earlier at the December 3 meeting that there were two other contracts that were entered into without first getting board approval. One was for Avatar Studios, and the other was for Cook &amp; Riley.
Okay.
Now, those don't seem to be flagged in your report.
Right. Initially, I know Cook &amp; Riley was on our initial draft that we sent over to Karen and Bola.
Uh huh.
And that one exception related to the, to the three proposal process taking place, and that exception, we had a on-call list where the, there was a contract with that specific, I remember Cook &amp; Riley where there is a, was a contract previously, and they were on the on-call list, which is why that proposal process did not take place. But everything else was in, all the boxes were checked on our testing related to that, and we do have a contract related to that.
Okay, what about Avatar?
Avatar, I, looking at this, I don't recall any exceptions. It was not, I don't think, on the on-call list.
Yeah, well, I don't want to speak.
But I would have to look back at details on that. I believe Avatar did the video, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So they're not covered under the definition of professional services, so they would not have had to go through the bid process, because I believe it was under 10 grand, it was like $9,900 or something, if I remember correctly.
Well, it was a given that it should have come to the board. We had this discussion.
Okay.
It should have come to the board before they were hired, and it wasn't. I just want to make sure I can have some assurances in your findings that you can explain why Cook &amp; Riley wasn't on there, why Avatar wasn't on there, since we've already had this, this discussion back in December.
Does our, our notes indicate that we did have a contract? We do have a contract, and is it related to the proposal process? Was it an ordinance that was accepted? We do have an ordinance. So it might have been, potentially we missed the timing, or maybe that ordinance was subsequent approved.
It was.
So we might have missed that in reporting.
Well, I'm just getting to, on one of your exceptions, you point out that in accordance with the purchasing code 135.100, the Board of Aldermen are to approve vendors as sole source prior to the city completing the purchases, and these were instances where that was not being followed, and I just want to get some explanation for why those weren't on your report, and, and you've answered those.
Okay, great.
And, and finally, the, the one exception, let's see, it's bullet point two. One exception was noted in which the capital form for $33,688 invoice from TWM was signed by Bola Conde as both the direct, department director and the city administrator. Can't tell us why that happened.
Tell us why it's happened, just a finding.
Okay.
And there was no indication of approval by the finance director, but also in that final approval process, that does come across the finance director's desk.
Right.
So, but that form specifically, which is one of the steps we tested, was not signed by the finance director, and again, Bola signed both, off on both of those steps on there.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lee.
Thank you. My question is to Karen, if she's available.
I think she's back there somewhere.
Karen, my question, my question deals with $155,915 that did not come through the warrant list to work with. My question is to you as to how did the checks get issued if we never approved it? Why wouldn't you have stopped that process?
Okay, so, so the mayor's right, it is requisition number one. It is, I have it right here.
Good.
It is in relationship to the...
Closing.
Closings, yes. Some of the, the charges on here, the actual request that was turned in to UMB trustees was for $210,000. Of that 210, the difference or whatever went through the warrant list. There was $75,000 that was reimbursed to the city, part of which was standard emporers, $25,000, part of what this is, Cook &amp; Riley fees, PGAV and the standard emporers, and some construction management fees. The other things, such as special tax council, the underwriters fee, the trustees fee, UMB's fee, there was a PGAV invoice, Stiefel, were paid directly to the vendors out of the trustees, out of the proceeds of the money. So in order for that to happen, the trustees don't just do that on a whim, it has to be their form filled out. And again, it was signed by Mayor Thornton in relationship with Bola, getting these invoices together for, for reimbursement, but they were all for closing costs related to the borrowing of the money.
All right, let me do a follow-up question with you. We closed the books on 2018. Do all of these invoices fall in and are on our books and balanced in the accounts, and we've already done our adjustments for the...
No, we're not through with our adjustments, our, people were here...
Final adjustment.
Yes.
Good.
We're not done with them yet, and on that same vein, you were asking Craig. I'm just going to be blunt, they're not in Craig's numbers, because I've been comparing Craig's numbers and mine. I don't think Craig knew about these.
Please, okay.
Not to mention Craig is also, remember, we talked about closing costs? He's tracking the project funds, the 39 million. I'm tracking the 43 million, all of it. So they may, they may not be in his, for a good reason. He's tracking the project costs for the various things related to the project, not the entire 43 million.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
And, and that may have been the context. I mean, again, I, I, look, you don't have to hide from anybody, my signature's on that form. If I signed it, I'm sure I thought that I was signing to dispersment of closing costs. So I mean, you know, I, I will be very frank about that. Now, if what I was doing was not approved and should have been, I, I, you know, all I can say is I'm sorry, I didn't know, but, you know, I, like I said, you don't have to be worried about that or hide that at all. The whole point of this exercise is to make sure that we are, have a reliable method for this board to track every penny of the money that we're borrowing and how we're spending it.
Right.
So, and, and it sounds to me like we've done a reasonably good job of that, but, but anyway, that, that may have been the context in which that discussion came up, David, I'm not really sure. I, I don't, I don't have a specific recollection of it, but I do remember the reimbursement, and all of that took place within a 30-day period of the closing.
Or less.
Yeah, probably even less. Everybody was anxious to get their money once we got the deal done, so.
We will have another quarterly report since we've now finished with the 31st of March.
Yeah, I don't know where they stand on the next quarterly report.
I haven't gotten any information related to the first one.
Okay, so.
It is my hope that with that report, we get all parties back on the same page, and everybody's using the same numbers, and we then have a good procedure that we're following and not finding exceptions.
I hope that there are no more findings, but...
Yes.
Well, and...
Always variable.
It's, it's all, everyone's hope, I think, that, that, you know, the quarterly reports will come within, say, 30 days of the close of the quarter so that they can be, you know, that, we're, we're still working on turning this into a process, folks, so.
Correct.
And one that's everybody's comfortable with is the most important thing, so. All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions for us?
I, I don't think so. I was, I'm sorry, I should have asked, but it looked to me like everybody had their head down and was looking at the next item, so.
Okay, great. Just one other thing to mention, we are working on an, an additional checklist to give Karen and Bola that covers our 12 steps so that they can kind of do a check off, a double check on their process so that they make sure they have everything, and we're hoping that there's not a lot of back and forth. This time, this go-around took a lot of time just because it was gathering so much information since it was the first time, so we're hoping that process goes smoother and the data is easily accessible and all of the information is there, so we are developing that process. Just to also mention on that on-call list, that did change from the process of the original on-call list that we got to the final on-call that list that we received, but we've had a discussion with Bola and Karen to make sure that that on-call list is kept up to date, and any additions to that be timely added, and obviously those we would see approval anyway. Going forward, it was that initial look at that, and it kind of morphed through the process. And then there were two other items that were actually paid related to PVAC, is that right?
PVA.
PVAG. Those were paid, they were, the expenses were incurred prior to the COP proceeds being approved, and were recommended not to be paid out of the proceeds, but they were paid out of the proceeds because they related to the project costs, and that was the architect who was, you know, developing and designing this whole project. So it was an appropriate expenditure, but we thought we would also mention that to the Board of Aldermen. So that concludes our report, unless anybody has any other questions. Thank you.
Sure, yep.
On-call list and contract list that she mentioned is something that the management team started putting together, I think, last year, and I just took it upon myself to start trying, the department heads and all, to get it completed, and she's right, we, people remembered, and we've added to it. And then the PGAV, the, the, the request, or the suggestion to deny it was by Craig, and Bola and I made the decision to go ahead and pay it out of the COP even because it was directly related to Brentwood bound, so.
I, I think I actually was asked about that one as well.
Right, so I just wanted to clear those two things up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any, does anybody care to make any changes to the consent agenda? Alderman Sims.
Not a change, it's a comment. The, I've reviewed the, this is item E on the consent agenda, the, the temporary liquor license for St. Mary Magdalene, it's just not up here, is it around? I've, I've reviewed the application, it looks fine, but the actual thing to sign, it's usually up here, and it wasn't. Is it out?
I don't think we have that for you tonight, but I'll make arrangements to either still get it signed tonight.
Yeah, no, I, I have nothing up here to sign. I'm so, should it...
It got till May, though.
So are we going to let them sweat it out, or?
And the deputy excise commissioner is available if necessary.
Deputy, Deputy excise commissioner will be on call.
Ready and willing.
I'm, I mean, I'm okay if you still just sign this and we can, this here form, and then we can go ahead and...
She doesn't have a phone.
I'll, I'll sign, I'll sign a piece of paper on my pad of paper if you want me to. It's, I don't have anything up here to sign.
Okay.
There usually is something up here to sign.
All right.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
Yep. Alderman Kramer, the consent agenda, please.
Yes, Your Honor, we have the standing committee reports for Public Works, Public Safety, Ways and Means, our minutes approval for March 18th of 2019, and some resolutions. Resolution 1138 covers a three-year contract with an option for two one-year extensions. That's with the American Banner of Amusements, a supplier for rides and other services for Brentwood Days. The 1139 resolution is an authorization for ground emergency medical transport program, GEMT, no out-of-pocket cost for the city or the residents, voluntary, and allows for the reimbursement of uncompensated costs for those eligible GEMT providers. And the recently mentioned special use permit application for St. Mary Magdalene Catholic Church, they've got a permit request to sell beer, wine, margaritas at their annual parish picnic to raise money for the school on May 17th and 18th. And the warrant list, finally, presented in the 2019 operating budget, $46,490.57, and the 2019 COP proceeds, $33,522.90.
Alderman O'Neal, I thought I saw you sort of perk up.
I do have a question for Eric, actually, about the carnival rides. That the resolution does not use the word "free," but the description of what the carnival rides would have would be free. Our discussion this past year was that because... Our discussion this past year was that because of the centennial, we would go ahead and have free carnival rides, but that would be revisited in future years with possibilities of a wristband for residents and a fee for those who are not residents. So, perhaps we need to be careful of the word "free" in the description, since it's not in the contract, I don't think it's an issue, but is there a problem with this?
You'd better, because I can.
So, in putting out the RFP, we had to put out the, we had to mention that there are going to be free carnival rides, because obviously, we will pay more for free carnival rides than we will for, if we're charging for carnival rides. We did, we do have a good relationship with this company if we need to, if the decision is made to charge for carnival rides. There is a disclaimer in the clause, in the contract, that says that we can exit out with a 60-day notice for both parties, so we can do that, or we could update the contract as well. So, we do have a couple ways that we can redo our contract if we choose to go a wristband route. So, I'm not worried about that at all.
Would it be fair to say that "free" represents the worst-case scenario in terms of cost?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Plouka?
I just wanted to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That'd be great.
Second. Moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda as submitted, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Demmett?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Plouka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims? Yes. And Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
All right, by unanimous vote, the consent agenda is approved, and that brings us to item number 10 on the agenda, which is old business. Let's see, we are gonna take up bill number 6233. Mr. City Attorney, could we have the second reading by title only, please?
Your Honor, can I do a point of order?
Well, make your point and we'll see.
The last meeting, we had this bill, and I made amendments to it. You now have this bill with a third revision. I don't know that you can have a second reading since you haven't done anything with the first group of amendment or the introduction of a third version.
Okay, well-
So, I think we should classify what it is we're voting and moving towards.
Yeah, I understand, no, I understand your point. Your point is actually out of order, and I'll tell you why I think it is, and then we can go further if you'd like. So, as I understand it, we had the first reading of this bill last meeting, there was some discussion that amendments would be offered, but I didn't, I don't recall any meetings, any amendments actually being made to the bill because there wasn't any discussion on the bill. So, as far as I know, we are still dealing with-
March 4th. Your Honor, it was a second reading last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, second reading.
There was a motion to perfect in the ordinance form, and then there was a second motion to table it until this meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That's right.
So, this is the second time we're doing the second reading?
Correct.
All right, so I'm gonna need a little help here. So, what, Mr. City Attorney, what is in fact in front of the board at this meeting?
The bill has second read.
The bill that was second read at the beginning of the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's where we're at.
Read it again?
Yeah.
Do you need to read it again?
There were no amendments that were carried at the last meeting?
Correct. There was an amendment proffered by Alderman Leahy. No action was taken.
Okay, so no action was taken on the amendment?
There was not, there was not a motion to amend.
So, to be absolutely clear, we are having a first and second reading on the same bill. I think that's the other concern I have, is that we had a first reading on a bill, we had a second reading on a bill, were they the same, in fact, bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're dealing with-
There was still an active motion to perfect ordinance 6233 in the ordinance form. I made the motion, plus it's seconded.
That motion was not disbursed with-
Correct.
So, what did, what was the action? I'm sorry, Tom, I'm gonna put you on the spot. What was the action? So, what was the action at the end of that discussion? Was it a motion to postpone?
No, to table.
Well, yeah, you can't table something without an emergency, so postpone. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so we're picking up the action, so we don't need to have a second reading, we're gonna pick, okay, very good. I'm sorry, folks, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I have to be caught up on procedure. All right, very good. So, what I'd like to do then is take up the discussion of bill number 6233 at this point, and we'll take up the discussion at that point, which is where we left it, yeah? Alderman Kramer?
Yes, Mr. Honor, just to remind our viewers about the episode of which they're about to hear more dialogue, bill number 6233, this is the text amendment to chapter 400 zoning, adding section 400.1375, that establishes the new MC Manchester Corridor Commercial District, we've heard a lot about, and there you go.
Okay, so this is the bill that would establish the MC zoning down in the Manchester corridor, very good. So now, we are going to resume the discussion, and since Alderman Leahy was, had proffered amendments but no action were taken, we'll let him have the first go at it.
For the board's indulgence, please. At this time, I would like to withdraw the amendments that I presented in the March meeting, mainly because one of the amendments that I had in the text is not legally enforceable and puts the city at risk, so we don't want to do that. So, I'd like to withdraw that amendment to work with. That did have a first and second to get it to be approved, to be amended to-
So, you're gonna withdraw that, you're gonna withdraw that motion?
Consideration, I'd like to withdraw that.
Okay, that motion is withdrawn.
All right. At this time, I would like to submit to the board the revised city attorney slash staff proposed change amendments, which address the majority of the changes that I had asked for earlier and eliminates the legal problem that I was creating.
So, just for the sake of clarity, Mr. City Attorney, is there some identifier or moniker that we could use to refer to these changes?
Yes, it's noted on the first page.
The first page of the draft has the word "city attorney slash staff's proposed changes" highlighted above the list of Alderman introducing.
We're gonna call this Kevin's version.
Oh, please don't.
So, so the, Alderman Leahy, I'm gonna put words in your mouth, you tell me if I'm wrong. So, you're gonna make a motion to amend bill 6233 per Kevin's version?
Yes.
Very good, that motion is made and seconded. Discussion on the motion to amend the bill.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. So, are we throwing out all of Leahy's revisions? So, I'm looking at district presented March 4th, 2019, is that the version of the ordinance we're considering now?
That one has been chucked.
That's gone.
Am I, am I correct there?
Right.
I believe the March 4th version has been chucked in favor of Kevin's version.
No, 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 no.
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 There is a motion to amend the March 4th version by this draft.
Oh, right, okay, so the March 4th version is the original version.
Yes, it is.
Very good.
Have we seen this draft before right now, before this, this agenda?
This was in our packet, in our electronic packet.
That came out Friday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Entitled, City Attorney and Staff.
So, I mean, would it be helpful if we would kind of go through this April version?
Well, I'd rather not do that unless the board feels it would be helpful.
Your Honor, I feel like we are just completely out of order in what we're doing here, right? This is a six-month process going through Ways and Means. I mean, we are within, what, 12 hours of our moratorium ending on this? I mean, we are looking like fools on this. So, I would make a motion to call the question to perfect 6233, which we've had in a first and a second reading, call the question on that. If we need to make subsequent changes to it, we can with minor ordinances and just stop in the madness.
Okay, so, a motion to call the question supersedes the motion on the floor, so, and it requires a two-thirds vote of the board. So, I will submit the question to the board. The motion to call the question would end debate and proceed directly to a vote on the March 4th version of the bill. If you're against doing that, it would like to continue the discussion of the proposed amendments, then you would vote no. So, a vote in favor is to immediately call the question, a vote against is to continue with the discussion of the amendment of the bill.
Your Honor, I'm gonna question the parliamentary procedure.
Mr. City Attorney, am I wrong in my interpretation of what a motion to call the question does?
I do not know you to be wrong.
Okay, I'm pretty sure I'm right on this one, Andy, I'm not, it does take a two-thirds vote, it takes six votes to call the question.
And I think it applies to the main motion as opposed to the motion to amend.
Yes, yes, that's correct, yeah. But it supersedes, it supersedes the motion to amend, so, that's how it works, I'm pretty And there's no discussion on a motion to call the question, so, I'll ask for a roll call.
Alderman Demmett?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
No.
Alderman Lockmiller?
No.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Plouka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to call the question will fail, and so therefore, we will return to the discussion of the proposed amendments. So, is there any discussion on Kevin's version? Alderman Leahy?
You have a motion to submit it as an amendment, we have not had a second.
Correct, that's what, yeah, no, you did have a second. Alderman Lockmiller seconded your motion, so.
Oh, thank you, sir.
The discussion is now on the proposed amendments, which I am calling, for the sake of convenience, Kevin's version. Alderman Plouka?
I'd like to take up Lisa Korkumeyer's offer of taking us through just the relevant, just the relevant changes that are reflected in the, in the amendment.
Okay, and I'm just gonna ask for a straw poll of the board, just to be, just to be sure.
Okay.
Straw poll by show of hands, all in favor of a quick walkthrough by Director Korkumeyer, raise your hand. Very good, thank you. Director Korkumeyer, if you'd walk us through the high points of Kevin's version.
Okay, so, I would suggest in order to do this, and we can do this very efficiently and probably quickly, is to, if everyone can kind of review then, the copy that still has the revisions, it has city attorney slash staff's proposed changes on the top of it.
Highlighted, right.
Yes, because as I go through this, I will be citing the page numbers and the references, and then that's the one that you'll want to refer to. So, there really hasn't been many significant changes, really, except for one, and I'll explain that in just a moment here. Most of these, again, are just very, I would say, just slight changes. On page three, which was C2, it was raised by Alderman Leahy to break out further under C2 what other types of activities could take place outside of the enclosed building for properties that are in the commercial district. So, what we did really was, just for clarification, we just broke those out. We still obviously included any type of accessory, off-street parking, but we also included two and three. Two would be referring to outdoor areas of display of seasonal merchandise if it was approved by a special use, and we cited the special use section of the code. And the other, the other one would be if it was other uses expressly permitted by conditional use permit further in this section of the code. So, I think, again, that just kind of helps clarify it. On that same page, under C3, we had in there previously that used sale, used vehicle or motor vehicle sales could be done in conjunction if the particular business also had new sales, and it was suggested by Alderman Leahy that instead of having things like trailers and boats or recreational vehicles, which we didn't feel that maybe that was as appropriate in the new MC district, that we would remove those, but instead clarify that used motor vehicles could be sold, automobiles, light trucks, and motorcycles, obviously, things that are capable of being titled and licensed under the Missouri law, that those used sales could be done if, again, there was, it was accessory to new sales in the MC district. And then on the filing page, on page four, we just, again, made the reference as, under permitted use under the Class A about the outdoor display and sale of merchandise. So, then we had, on page five, we had to do the same thing with, again, just including the outdoor display and sale of merchandise as permitted uses in the Class B and Class C sites. And, what else we had? Yes, and so this, on page six, I think, was maybe the only thing of real significance. We had another conversation, because what we had in the original version of this was that only buildings and structures that would be greater than six feet in height or seven, or six stories or 75 feet and greater in height would be only permitted by conditional use permit. And why we did that is we were modeling it under what we think works in the Brentwood community in areas that are already zone urban development. So, but after we discussed this further, there has been throughout our public engagement portion of this, some questions about lowering that height requirement, and so, we did decide that it was probably a better solution to actually decrease that height requirement to require a conditional use permit if it was three stories or greater. And the reason why for that is, we felt like we could control the height of it on a case-by-case basis just under site plan review, but then, if we went ahead and decreased that height requirement, then another advantage to that is that would actually require a public hearing because it would be a conditional use permit. So, the thought was that more of your adjoining property owners would be notified of that particular proposal and that they would be able to be, you know, part of that review process as well. So, I think that's generally why we decided to go ahead and decrease the height for that. And I think the rest then are just things that just kind of cleaned up the ordinance after we went to look at it again, but I think the height one was the major point, so.
Okay. So, these have been offered together as a, as a single amendment. Obviously, I don't want to go too procedural, so, let me just throw this out there. I'd like to have a discussion on the entire motion as made, and then if you want to slice and dice it, we won't have to go through motions to that as long as I'm sure that you're all clear on what you're voting in at the end of the deal, right? Okay, everybody get that? Unless you insist. I mean, we could have motions and sub-motions for each element or whatever, but.
I have a lot of questions about the changes.
Yep, sure.
So, should we go through those for the next couple hours?
I don't, at this point, what I would prefer to do is have an expression of opinion about the, I mean, unless, do you need the questions answered in order to form an opinion?
Yeah, I'd be curious what planning and zoning commission's feeling on lowering the height requirement was, for example. What is their opinion of that?
Well, it wouldn't have been brought back because their last meeting was in March.
So, it hasn't been reviewed by P&amp;Z, so that's a change from what their intent was.
I think it's fair to say that none of these have been to P&amp;Z because they're-
Oh, yes, sir. I addressed P&amp;Z specifically on the height of the buildings before they approved their bill coming forward.
So, they approved one that did not have these height changes in it? So, I think we know their opinion of the height.
The original bills, the original bill with the height change established that it would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan that was approved. The comprehensive plan established no higher than three feet. We raised the issue that you have up to a seven-
Three stories.
Three stories.
Okay.
You have up to a 75-foot tall building that could be placed in front of your residential district in Ward Three, and we raised that concern with them and asked them not to do that. They voted to pass it.
I would contend that what P&amp;Z released was their intent, and I think as, as their function as the reviewer of our zoning and planning, you know, that, that we should have their input on this. I believe we have their input in the existing ordinance, which they have proposed to bring forward to us, and this has not been routed through them, informal conversations aside. I would also have questions about the outdoor clarifications. It's not really clear to me, I've got a lot of red cross out and things, what, what the changes are and what, what would the impact be for restaurants in terms of sale of merchandise outside? And honestly, I mean, this is just a philosophical thing. Last meeting, we were told the most significant change here was the height of the buildings, when in reality, there was a severe, you know, constitutional liability lurking within there, so I think we need much more rigorous review of these changes before we accept them.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Well, I believe the first page has our city attorney's proposal, so it's been reviewed by him. I'm in support of the amendments, particularly, I'm gonna pick one out.
Go ahead, like I said. We won't get too carried away with dividing things until I get a sense of where we're at.
The building height, I mean, this is mentioned in our, in the comp plan, which came out of P&amp;Z, I believe. Is this truly where they spoke on building height in that area, no more than three stories?
It was listed in the sub-area plan of the comp plan, that's correct, which was vetted by the P&amp;Z commission.
So, that has been vetted by the citizens that serve on P&amp;Z. I was hoping to make a sub-district where these would, no more than three stories would take place, but as you just said, that's in violation of state statute. You can't just do subsections, it has to be within the whole- You can't just do subsections, it has to be within the whole zone. So, by putting it at three stories, the minimum, anything up and above has to go through a conditional use permit. And that's where the public hearing comes in, this is where citizen gets engagement, gets brought in. So, I would support the amendments, particularly this one on the three-story.
Alderman Ploufka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the, the building height, isn't there also an acreage requirement? That is, that relates, there's a formula that relates to how high you can build based on how much acreage you have cobbled together, correct?
That was in the UD district requirements, but then that was changed back in 2017, I believe it was, which opened up having more latitude on the height requirement based, not on just necessarily the size of the parcel, but again, through site plan review, so.
Are you saying there's no acreage requirement with regard to the, the three-story and six-story buildings?
Not with the, the height, there is with the density, and so, there is with density, but not with the height.
Actually, we changed that, we changed that just prior to the hotel coming through, because it was, we, we had determined it was sort of ridiculous to require two acres in order to go an extra story. And we changed that so that the UD district would only operate on a site plan review basis, so that it can be referred case by case.
So, let me ask the theoretical question this way. A portion of this district extends to the north side of Manchester Road between Hanley and roughly Mary Avenue, I guess. Was that be right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any portion of this district that has enough real estate in it that's not, that wouldn't have to go into a residential area to be able to build anything of any height more than two or three stories on that north side? I mean, I, I understand Alderman Lockmiller's concern, and I, I, I would feel the same way if I lived in close proximity on the north side of Manchester Road with the prospect of living in a house where there's a three-story building that's gonna go up at the end of my block. But I, I wonder how practical that, that, that concern is, given the, the fact that there isn't that much land in the district itself on the north side of Manchester Road.
That, I would say, too, that there's not enough acreage on the north side, so the utility of the property is limited. But again, that would be based on, if the MC district was established and then the property rezoned, this MC district could also, though, still expand on the north side as well.
You mean go farther north?
There could be a rezoning request in the future.
Right, but that would have its own set of public involvement and the changes of a zoning area and things like that, right? Okay, so that has its own protections, so to speak, with regard to public involvement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Leahy? I didn't know if you were raising your hand, so, sorry.
Well, I'd like to answer part of Alderman Demmett's que, uh.
Ploufka.
Ploufka's question, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong. Under a potential redistrict of the MC, I can acquire enough parcels on the north side of Manchester Road, and I can put a large building in. I don't have a depth of lot, except down on the far east end, where I can get a deeper lot. We had that with the metro. It went seven stories to work with. There's four acres down there, type thing. But what we're looking at is, if you're starting to do something and developing that north side, if it goes over three stories, it does have to be reviewed, and the public has a chance to chime in. It doesn't mean it will be rejected, but at least it's open for full discussion. That was the intent of controlling what's there.
Okay, any further discussion on the proposed amendments?
I have more questions. Right, so, the outdoor display and sale of merchandise, what, what would the impact be for restaurants that would like to put tables out on the sidewalk, for example? Would that allow them to do that?
So, this would make it, so it would be part of the site plan review. So, if a restaurant especially, that, that would be a good example. If they would come in and say, hey, I have a proposal to bring a restaurant to this area, I would ask, are there any plans or any future plans for perhaps an outdoor dining or something, so that that would be included as part of the site plan review? And so, if it was included in part of the site plan review, there wouldn't be like a, an extra conditional use permit approval as part of that, because that would be seen now as accessory to that, and it wouldn't have to have a CUP, it could be approved. So, actually, we'd probably favor maybe like the restaurant example proposal.
Okay, and do we want that? Right, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm not clear what this does to, to help us with that, right? So, that means, because that is an accessory sale with the permitted use, then they would be able to, to have tables and things like that on the, on the sidewalk, is, I guess, what I'm hearing.
Right, I mean, yes, as part of, and we, it would be part of, though, the site plan. I mean, that, they would have to come in and show that as part of the proposal, though, for that parcel. I guess I'm not understanding the question, I apologize.
Your honor, may I help?
If you can. Alderman Weggie's still got the floor, but it sounds like he's willing to relinquish it, so.
In the original version from the March 4th, all businesses were required to be in, in the enclosure. This amendment does allow parking lot displays or different sales during the quarterly portions of the year, so that you can encourage it in it. Restaurants could benefit from the idea of being outside. The original bill said everything had to be within the enclosure. I questioned that, and that's why I asked them to open it.
Yeah, my concern is that, does it open it too much? Because, you know, I believe your, your original thought was Ace Hardware. Do they need to get a permit to put stuff out in front of there, which I doubt that is reflected in their site plan? Right, can they put their flowers out in the parking lot? Can they do all that stuff? So, will this allow, excuse me, I think I have what Demmett's getting. Will this allow, you know, basically, will this relinquish our control of our ability of people putting stuff out in parking lots?
Well, so, that would be more an example of, of letter two there for, like, outdoor display of merchandise would be a special use. And so, a special use says that it's a temporary use of the property. So, that wouldn't necessarily be permanent. So, if it was seasonal, and again, if you provided the nursery example or something, they could come through and get a special use permit for that. And that's recognizing as allowable. If it, if it's granted a special use permit, then they would be allowed to have that. That would be a permitted accessory use in the MC district.
Yeah, I'm looking at Section C, all business, and then sub-bullet one, accessory, oh, I'm sorry, outdoor, sorry, bullet two, outdoor area of display of seasonal merchandise or other use defined as special uses in Article One. Right, that would not, that would not limit the businesses that are allowed to put stuff outside, correct?
If it wouldn't be like a permanent situation, like an outdoor patio or something that's approved as a part of their site plan review, if it was something that was just seasonal in nature, then that's where the special use would be requested and would be reviewed. Because it's temporary.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, haven't we made it so those special use permits can be granted at your discretion, or your position's discretion?
Yes, there's only one type of special use that has to go in front of the Board of Aldermen, and that's for storage containers.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's the change here from the original, then? Right, we, we added these three additional definitions, I believe, correct?
Yes.
In Section C2?
Yes, we added it. I, I think it's just for clarification, because I think it was, again, it was a little bit more just broad in terms of all business services, storage, merchant, merchandise display, you know, and processing shall be conducted wholly within the enclosed building.
Except for the following, accessory off-street motor vehicle, right? We already had that, the bullet that's lined out was there, right?
Right, exactly. So, we had only really addressed the off-street motor vehicle parking. So, by adding what's there below, I think, again, gives a little more latitude to businesses. But again, I, I don't know if everyone agrees that that's a good thing. But now there's provisions for it, where either if it's temporary, they could come and get a special use permit. If it's gonna be of permanent nature, it would be permissible, but it would also have to be included as part of the site plan review.
I, I still have questions about how we control. It just seems, it seems amorphous, actually. I mean, it, I feel like it's intending to drive more clarity into it, but it's creating more confusion in some respect. I mean, in many ways, I, I go to the, you know, the final statement where the director of, of planning has the, kind of the discretion to say if this is within there or not, correct? At the bottom.
Now, that hasn't, that was in.
That hasn't changed, right? And, and again, I feel like this actually is attempting to create more clarity, but it creates more confusion for me. Right, because it's giving more definition, which could allow more, I don't know, exploitation of these type things, right? I would, I would contend that seasonal is when I'm putting my tables outside, only when it's warm enough to eat outside, right? So, that's seasonal to me.
If I may, the, the reference added here is to an existing definition in the code, and that's the code definition of special use, which is a use of property on a temporary basis, which the current zoning of the property does not allow. So, that's what a special use is. Goes on to talk about storage containers requiring approval by the Board of Aldermen and others being subject to administrative approval. So, the, the addition here is the possibility that special uses outside the four walls of the building may occur, which prior to this could not occur, presumably. I've added to the confusion from the look on your face.
I don't see why, again, except for the following, right, there are conditions already in there, and I feel like by adding more of specific, more specificity here, I think is, that's my opinion. All right, let's go on to the next one, because we've got a bunch of these we gotta go through. So, again, I, I, I think that's an unnecessary change in Section 2. All right, used motor vehicles, we've struck out trailers, boats, and recreational vehicles, right? So, those are specific uses that we're saying are not allowed. Now, that would still be covered that even when the original 6233, trailers, boats, and recreationals were included, but may only be sold in conjunction on the same lot with the sale of new vehicles, same type, right? So, so there was never the ability that somebody selling cars could sell a boat on the side, correct, before, in the original language?
I would say that's correct, because there, there would be primarily a car dealer, so. They have to have dealerships, so it would be unlikely to have an auto dealership have a boat dealership.
Or selling a boat just on the side.
Yeah.
Because they couldn't do that before. Now, by striking these out, is it possible that we are excluding, you know, trailer seems like kind of a generic term, so if we say there's, you know, if we're taking out like trailers, boats, and recreation vehicles, I guess, is the intent to make sure that no trailers, boats, and recreational can, can be sold? Wouldn't that be handled under the conditional use permit?
So... So, in the, of course, we have the three classes to deal with under, I know it wouldn't be impermitted, so, conditional. So, for instance, on page six, which is now approved by conditional use in Class A or B, what we have is that new vehicle automobile dealerships are permitted only by conditional use permit. So, it doesn't say anything with trailers or recreational vehicles. So, I would say that those wouldn't have, would not be permitted even by conditional use permit. So, this is clarification that those are removed, and that we're only going to deal with automobiles and trucks, motorcycles.
Your honor, again, if I may?
You may. Well, hold on.
To help clarify Mr. Weggie's question.
It's not allowed on the smaller, on Class C site sizes.
Walk me through taking those three off. I, what, what is the intent of striking those three?
Well, I guess it's, you know, it's, it's more questionable if you'd want to see those types of uses still on the quarter. And then also, as I had mentioned, that previously what we had in there, it was only, it only talked about having auto dealerships. So, not things like trailers and RVs and so forth. So, now it's, it's been, there's no confusion, it's been removed.
But what if, right, what if Ace Hardware is, is selling like a, a small inflatable boat? Does that mean this, by striking this out, that doesn't allow it, or is that covered under their conditional use permit of, of their sale?
Well, I think, again, with any of these types of uses, we're talking that that is their primary product that they're selling. So, if, again, they had like one type of boat or something, inflatable boat, from a hardware store, I don't consider that as part of this definition. That's not gonna be considered a boat dealership, so.
Again, so what, what clarification to striking those four, five words out? I guess, that's, that's my confusion. Why are we making all these changes in the absolute last minute? That is driving, in my opinion, a lot more questions into the changes when we have five months of, of work into the existing ordinance.
Okay, uh, time out, time out, time out. I think I, Lisa, do, do you have a recommendation for the board as the planning director with respect to this amendment?
I still am comfortable with the city attorney and staff's proposed changes, with some of the things that Alderman Weggie has a difference of opinion.
So, no, I, I, I guess, do you have a recommendation with respect to the, the proposed changes, the amendment that's been offered? You're okay with, is it, is it better in your opinion or worse than we were before? I mean, that's what I would guess what we're looking to hear, is it not?
I, I think it, I think it's better, at least in terms of some of the things that we have made changes with, with clarifications. I don't see a problem with that. And the building heights, I still think is an improvement, because if anything, it captures more, not less. And I think when it comes to still, just some things that are listed in the permitted and conditional use categories, it's just really kind of down to a preference, if people think that Brentwood should have convenience stores, trailer dealerships. It, it all comes back down to what eight people here think is the, the preference of the Brentwood community. So, it's kind of even hard as a planning director to say that I favor this or, or don't favor when it comes to things that are listed in the permitted or conditional use category.
Okay, then I think that goes, then I think that goes to Brandon's point about, you know, kind of who all makes those. Ultimately, we make those decisions, but there's a lot of other people involved, to some extent, I mean.
Yeah, so why, why are these changes necessary, is I guess my question.
Okay, fair enough.
And, and I would, I, I have deep concerns about the height thing. I, I don't believe that's been vetted through the P and Z, you know. I, it may be in there, I don't know, you know, we got, we got 12 hours left, right, until the moratorium.
Well, I, I was going to point out that I think it is incumbent upon us to take some action tonight as our moratorium expires, and I don't, I think everybody agrees that we should put something in place, but, but anyway. Yes, you may.
After nine years on P and Z, I, I still have the feeling, on P and Z, you know that you are vetting things, but you are vetting them with a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen, knowing that the board is going to take the final action. They can ignore your recommendations or not, they have a broader view of things than you do just on P and Z. So, I don't think at this point it needs to go back to them. I think we've done enough that we can vet it ourselves.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sims?
I guess I'll ask staff this. How, if we pass the original ordinance that was vetted, as Alderman Weggie said, through P and Z for a long period of time, and there are now, we have amendments that have come, come to pass in the last two weeks, how are we hamstrung? What is the harm of just passing an original, the, the, the ordinance as submitted? I mean, I'm okay with a misplaced whereas or witness it. If we're talking about sort of nomenclature, like a, more words without real distinction that aren't really material, I mean, I have concerns that, you know, I echo Alderman Weggie's concerns, that there, these are things, and, you know, height issues where we're discussed, these, these additional, this additional language 12 hours before the election, I think is problematic. And if we can do the job of the city, the way the ordinance was reviewed and vetted and understood and approved, I think, you know, we can come back and. and understood and approved, I think, you know, we can come back and tweak it later. But I'd like to know, like, if we pass the original ordinance, like, what, how are your hands tied? What is, how are you hamstrung? How are you, like, what concern are we not addressing if that's, you know, if we elect not to do the amendment?
Well, I think, again, and, and this is in other, built into other zoning districts too, it's just not the MC district, but the way the Brentwood code is written, and what's included in a lot of the district, is a lot of review authority in your site plan review. So I guess to try to help answer that, I would say that most of the proposals we're going to see, they first obviously have to, to fall into that it is a permitted or a conditional use, right? So well, either it's permitted by right, and we, we review the site plan, or it's going to require a public hearing and a conditional use permit. But a lot of these, again, have, I mean, between the area bulk requirements and, and things also like accessory uses and so forth, really, that comes down to site plan review. And so I, you know, I think there, I think it's okay either way, so I don't, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with the revisions that have been mentioned. The height requirement, like I said, I don't think it's a deal breaker if we kept, you know, this greater than six stories. What I would say, though, is that there are some concerns by some members of this board, which I'd really like to see an MC district get passed, that at least a building requirement, the amendment that we made, is going to capture more, not less. And I think that is a good thing, so. I'm not the chair, sorry, I didn't mean to call on you.
If I may, partially I suppose.
The bill's name for, the amendment is named for you, so yeah.
Well, that's what I want to talk about.
I, I think as a matter of right, you get to speak on your own, the amendment of your namesake.
If I could defend myself, because I, I disclaim the credit or blame. My role in this, and I'm not embarrassed by it, is that with the amendments discussed and introduced at the last meeting, tripped some triggers for me that I thought were problematic. One of which was a constitutional concern with the use limitation. The other, others were that the, as drafted, the provisions said, on the north side of the street, you can do this, and on the south side of the street, you can do that. Well, the Missouri statute specified that the regulations in a zoning district have to be consistent throughout the district. So you can't have the ACE district, and it's different on the north and the south side, because there are north and south side. So what we did was redraft that problematic change, and that, that north-south distinction was an am mendatory item. So what I tried to do was to draftsmanship on the amendments, so that they were not as problematic as originally presented. So the Kevin draft is draftsmanship of the amendments, not the underlying ordinance that was there before. And it is, my draftsmanship had nothing to do with the merits of the restrictions being imposed or the regulations, they had to do with getting it massaged in such a way that they were past muster if challenged. So instead of heights being different on north and south sides of the street, we added a provision which said as part of site plan, the permissible height can be reduced depending on the environs and the character of the surrounding areas, and the character of the project and the adjoining uses. That gives discretion to say, we're going to limit it lower where you're towering over, and even use the language dominating or domineering the environment, that sort of thing. In terms of the, the language about site, the uses varying with site size, I don't think that violates the statutory limitation, but I took out language that says we're classifying the sites, and just said uses based on size, and, and tried to limit some of that sort of nomenclature. So really, what I did was to try to massage the, the amendments as presented, so that they were less problematic, and I thought fit into the overall scheme. These amendments, and my, with all humility, must say, I do not take credit for the rest of the bill that was there in the first place. I merely addressed the amendments.
So a big surprise, he's in favor of his version.
No, no.
I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking.
I just want to say, I didn't, I didn't write the amendments, I massaged them so they didn't-
I understand. I, I think, I think we, I think we all, we all get your role in the deal, so Alderman Kramer?
Yes, Your Honor. The original call for the question was for a bill that if passed, I, my understanding was that, that we could amend that after it was passed, an effort to get something passed. But in this, in particular, this amendment, in seeking clarification from our Assistant City Administrator, the, the height question, that's, that seems to be a sticking point here, or certainly a question, basically allows for an automatic, or allows for less scrutiny, I guess best way to put it, at the lower level, but forces a scrutiny, forces more permission for the higher level, whereas before, it was automatic at the higher level. Is that correct?
Um.
I'm trying to be general terms, in general here.
Yeah.
I think what he's asking is, is that the unamended version of the bill would allow higher structures as a matter of right-
Correct.
-than the amended version of the bill, which I believe is a correct statement.
Yes, but again, there still is also site plan review.
Right, sure.
So possibly a four-story building, even though you, and I guess that was my point before, although a four-story building would not need a CUP, under the original bill, it still be, could be controlled by site plan review.
Okay. Your Honor, I, I don't see any, based upon what I've heard just now, I don't see any problem with the amendment. I'm in favor of the language that I've seen, and I don't think this, I, I don't think there's in general any harm coming from, perhaps there's additional language in here that some find problematic, and I totally understand and respect that, but I, listening to what the discussion has taken place so far, especially from our Director of Planning, I, I think this, this is really going to be covering a lot more of the bases for us going forward on this important area, so I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Plufka, yeah.
Your Honor, I would, could we call the question with regard to the motion on the amendment?
No, we've already moved the previous question, so.
Okay. What's that?
That?
That was on the main motion.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but, but, so the motion is actually to move the previous question, which is the, the motion behind.
No, the mo-
No.
No.
It's to call for the vote on the amendment. Yes. It would be proper to call for a vote on the amendment.
Oh, you're gonna, so you're, oh, yeah, so you're gonna move, I, I understand, you're gonna move to cut off debate on the amendment. I apologize. Yes, absolutely, right. Uh, yes, you can. Was that a motion to do so?
It was, yes. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All right, so moved and seconded to call the question on the amendment. So just to be clear, no discussion, it requires a two-thirds vote. All in, if you vote yes, you're in favor of terminating the discussion of the amendment and moving directly to a vote on the amendment. If you want to continue discussion, then you vote no. So with that said, roll call, please.
Alderman Dimmitt?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
No.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil? Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy.
Okay, I have a vote of seven yays and one nay. That means we will move directly to consideration of the question, which is the amendment. So we would now be voting on the proposed amendments, which I have jokingly called Kevin's version. A yes vote would mean that you're in favor of adding these amendments to Bill 6233. A no vote would mean that you're in favor of not adding these amendments to Bill 6233. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Dimmitt?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil? Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
No. All right, by a vote of seven yay and one nay, the amendments are passed and will be added to the bill. We are now back to the main motion, which is the perfection of Bill 6233 as amended.
Wish to amend the bill.
I'm sorry?
I wish to move to amend the bill.
Okay, we have a motion to amend Bill 6233?
Yes.
You'll have to tell us a little bit about what you want to do to it.
Okay. In the bill, we establish that we do allow car sales, new and used, to work with. We do not, in anywhere in the Brentwood code, define a car dealership selling cars as whether or not it does or does not have repair facilities. We currently have five facilities in this district that would become nonconforming in the area. I would like to amend the bill to establish that car sales in this district do allow to have repair services in them, because it improves your dealership if you can get your car serviced at where you buy it. That is one of the two amendments I'd like to make to this bill.
Okay, I'm going to ask a clarifying question, because I don't understand your proposed amendment, so.
It's to clarify, sir.
Well, no, I understand, but, but you said that, you said that there would be five facilities that would be nonconforming?
Yes, there are five repair facilities.
We don't have five car dealerships in that zone.
We have five repair service areas that with the change of this zone, they are not approved in the zone.
So your amendment would make them-
Repair facilities and automobile servicing allowable in the zone.
Together or as separate uses?
I would allow them to be either, as part of a car dealership, or as a repair service.
So you're proposing to, to amend the bill to include repair facilities as a permitted use or conditionally permitted use?
Permitted.
As a permitted use, okay. That's the motion. The motion is to amend the bill to allow car repair facilities as a permitted use.
Now, the reason-
Well, I, no, 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 no discussion until I get a second.
You gotta get a second.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
Lisa, does the comp plan address that down in that area?
Well, wait, 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 actually, no, I'm sorry, because until we have a second, there's nothing to discuss.
Okay.
I apologize, but that, you know, that's fine. I'm trying to stick to the rules here, more or less.
Your Honor, I'll yield to the fact that there is no second on that motion.
Your motion will die for lack of a second.
May I make the second motion?
You may make another motion if you like.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am looking at, let's get the right page. I am looking at page two of 22 of the amended bill, and Section B for applicability, and point number two, the rehabilitation of existing structures being limited to the 50% value of the St. Louis County assessment. It is my intent to remove that section and allow businesses that are currently in the district to continue to maintain and upgrade their facilities to help meet the codes of the city of Brentwood. And that's the amendment I'd like to propose.
Okay, I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure I understand that amendment either, and until I understand it, I can't really rule on it, so help me out here.
You have a limitation in this bill-
Yes.
-that'll, that prohibits current businesses to upgrade and remodel-
No, 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 current, nonconforming uses.
The provision in this section allows for the development within the district, new construction on a vacant or cleared land, rehabilitation of an existing structure which exceeds current market value of the land and the improvements, according to the most recent St. Louis County assessor's market value by more than 50%.
Yeah, that's the definition, okay.
It prohibits these people from maintaining their facilities and upgrading.
I completely disagree with that.
This unfortunately limits that, sir. If they spend more than 50% of that assessment, they can't do it.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not going to take that motion. I, I don't believe that that's what that says. Mr. City Attorney, if you'd care to-
As I read it, all this, the current language says is that the, the zoning regulations apply not just to new construction, but to rehabilitation which exceeds half the market value, so that minor, each minor step of improvement or maintenance would be excluded from these regulations. That's all I take it to mean.
We've had a gentleman that has approached the board twice. We've also had letters sent to us. Their contention is, is their current business cannot be upgraded-
But, okay, I'm going to stop you there. So if your intent is to do what the folks at Life Storage would like us to do, could I suggest that you just adopt their proposed language?
Yes, sir, I could, I could make-
I mean, that would be the, I'm sorry, that would be the easiest way to handle this, rather than messing around with-
Well, in the letter that they provided us, they asked for the renovations, remodeling, rehabilitation, or expansion of a self-storage facility exist on the effective date of this ordinance to work with. I don't know how to fit that into this bill.
Well, I think they even gave us a place to fit it into the code, so let's assume for the sake of argument that we could find the appropriate place to put that to affect what they're trying to achieve. I, I think that's not, that is certainly something that Kevin version two could do. So I'll take that as your motion, will that work?
Can I open it to the point that any existing facility would be allowed to upgrade?
Well, you're, you're saying not just limit it to self-storage?
Exactly.
Okay, so for any, any, any nonconforming, any existing nonconforming use?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That would work.
Very good, that'll work. Yes, that's your motion.
Thank you.
That work, I mean, I want to make sure I get it clear, but I'm just trying to help. All right, I'm going to need a second. And I'm hearing crickets. Okay, that motion is also going to die for lack of a second. And I'm staying silent to give anybody who is reconsidering a chance, and that's it, so no motion. Uh, next item on the agenda?
We need to pass the pass-
Oh, I thought we had. No, no. No, I was joking, of, yes, of course we have to vote. No, that really was a joke. I knew we still had to vote, I was just, after an hour and a half, I had one.
There's a limit.
Right, so now, we will vote on Bill 6233 as amended by Kevin's version. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? Very good. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Dimmitt?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
O'Neil? Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
No. All right, I vote, I count seven yays and one nay, and that means Bill 6233, upon signature of the mayor, which better be quick-
Forty-eight seventy-three.
Will become ordinance forty-eight seventy-three. All right, next item on the agenda, for sure this time. Uh, we have Bill number, God, no.
Six-two-three-four.
Six-two-three-four, which would actually implement what we just passed in the district. So we have had a second reading of this already, or no?
No.
Yes.
I don't believe you actually ever got to a second reading of this.
I don't think we did either.
We have not.
We tabled it, we tabled it the same motion.
So you had a second reading of this, and then, you did not, yeah. So the postponing of the A portion mooted the second point, and you moved right past it, which is what I would think would happen.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. City Attorney, can we have the second reading of Bill 6234 by title only, please?
Bill number 6234, second reading, in consideration for adoption, an ordinance to rezone certain property generally located north and south of Manchester Road, between South Annley Road and the Berry Avenue and Dorothy Avenue intersection, to MC Manchester Corridor Commercial District.
All right.
To perfect Bill sixty-two thirty-four into ordinance form.
Second. Moved by Alderman Leahy, seconded by Alderman Plufka, to perfect Bill number six-two-three-four. Is there any discussion on the bill? Alderman Kramer?
The title was the synopsis.
I apologize. Oh, I'm getting punchy. The title was the synopsis, as I said, this bill just implements the district that was just approved, so any further discussion, seeing none? Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Alderman Dimmitt?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
And Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
This becomes ordinance number four-eight-seven-four.
All right, very good. Item number 11A is new business. We have Bill number six-two-three-six. Mr. City Attorney, could I have the first reading by title only, please?
Bill number six-two-three-six, first reading, an ordinance pending ordinance number thirty-six-eight-one, and granting a conditional use permit for a restaurant, and amending the approved site development plan for the Brentwood Square, formerly Brentwood Town Center, development specifically for property numbered one-five-zero-seven, South Brentwood Boulevard. Brentwood Boulevard.
All right, and Alderman Kramer, what can you tell us about First Watch?
Yes, Your Honor, a little bit more detail. Originally Brentwood Town Center, also known as Brentwood Square, the amendment restricts the additional conditional uses to one restaurant in one building measuring forty-four hundred and fifty square feet in area. That's the Panera Bread Company. The petitioner here desires to lease the northernmost area of the Brentwood Square, forty-four hundred eighty-seven square feet, and that tenant space will become a restaurant, otherwise potentially known as First Watch, requiring amending our CUP for their Brentwood Square development. The restaurant specializes in serving breakfast, brunch, and lunch, seven days a week from seven to three, employing twenty to twenty-five employees.
All right, very good. You're doing double duty tonight, Lisa, so do you have any information for the board on this?
We did ask CBB to do a traffic review and a parking assessment for this particular project, and the CBB report was included in your packets, but it concluded that the second restaurant adding that would not cause any additional traffic and parking load concerns, and that everything could be accommodated on the existing road system and available off-site parking lots. And just a few other things, this is obviously an existing tenant space. There's no changes that are planned for any other additional site improvements, nothing, no changes to the building elevations except for signage. Did want to point out that signage was part of the package before you tonight, and that was basically it, that the Plan and Zoning Commission had recommended approval with, with several conditions that was outlined in the bill in front of you tonight.
Alderman Plufka?
I just have a couple of questions. This is, so just so I'm, I'm clear, this is the, the space at the northern end of...
Yeah, it used to be true runner. Okay.
All right, and to the concerns that were voiced by the resident who was here earlier tonight, did they, did the, did the Planning and Zoning Commission talk at all about the differences in noise? There's not gonna be any difference in terms of hours of operation. It's not gonna be in operation at any times where everything else in this, in the, in the area is not in operation, right?
Right, that what, that is why one of the conditions was made by the Plan and Zoning Commission. It was picked up in the traffic report, that for this specific type of restaurant that's gonna have morning and till mid-afternoon hours, that again, there would be no impact to traffic. That being said, if there was a restaurant that would maybe be operating, have an outdoor patio where some of those things maybe would be introduced with noise or something, or just, are just even longer hours of operation into the evening and so forth, that that could also change the traffic patterns.
Here's my only, my only other question is, would they have to install, because of the previous use, would there have to be installed, installed any kind of exhaust or any kind of equipment that would, that would impact noise? You know, in other words, like a, I don't know, a kitchen exhaust or something like that?
Greeshood, that, right, that communicates with the outside.
Well, that, that would be part of, obviously, the remodel and the construction. But if you think about any other existing restaurant we have there, Panera Bread, there's not, I wouldn't say any type of noise, or not noise, I'm sorry, odor emissions or anything.
They'll have a hell of a time drowning out Highway forty, I can tell you that.
And I wasn't so much concerned about the, about the exhaust from a smell standpoint. I was concerned, or at least...
With noise, vent or something?
Right.
Yes, I mean, there, those vent systems and so forth, I mean, the way they make them nowadays, again, I don't know of any of them. Sometimes if we've had restaurants with maybe have outdoor refrigerated units, because they run out of space, and then sometimes they're adding, you know, sometimes now there's, there's noise, I can hear vented from those types of facilities, but this would not include anything like that, so...
Did, did the plans include some indication as to whether it was venting out the west side, or the north side, or on the roof, or...
We haven't gotten to that point yet, since this is only CUP approval.
Thanks very much. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes, Madam Assistant City Administrator, does there a timeline proposed? Have we heard a start and a finish date that they're idealizing for this location?
I, I don't know if anything's changed. The petitioner was here tonight. I don't know if that's something maybe you'd want to get more of a...
May we, please?
...update on?
If he knows quickly, yeah.
Yeah, the permits were applied for, and they should be receiving them no longer than, or no later than May fifteenth. Construction will commence thereafter, usually somewhere between three to four and a half months, something like that. So, hopefully, end of the summer, something like that.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a question. Please, please stay there. One of my questions is for you too.
Alderman O'Neil has a question. Your restaurant's in their wards.
Yes, it's our ward. CBB may have done a traffic study, but I don't think they've addressed the parking issues, and there are horrible parking issues, especially on weekend. Pace has not seemed to be aware that some people use that as a parking lot to park there and as carpooling to go downtown. So, some cars are parked there in the morning and stay there all day, which means that people trying to get into Whole Foods or Michael's or whatever have a really tough time for parking. Is there any plan on your part to do anything to regulate the parking?
Yeah, that, the parking field was looked at from CBB. They, they did address the parking, said there was sufficient parking on site for restaurant use. One of the arrangements is, many of the cars you see are cars from Magna Place, and that has been, it hasn't been an issue for the property, just due to the fact that there hasn't been a tenant there. And it has, there was some, some parking garage work being done on the top floor of Magna Place, and when the parking was limited during that period, people kind of changed their path of where they were parking, and landlord plans on implementing some policing of, of the parking to make sure that there isn't an additional amount of tenants from Magna Place parking there.
Okay. I don't think the parking is a problem with Magna Place. It's more in the front of the parking lot, edging Brentwood Boulevard where people are gathering. So, please do that. Thank you. Another question too, or just a comment. Now, the, the speaker tonight addressed the problem of people coming out of that parking area north and trying to get on Eager Road. It's dangerous. We've said that for years. The city really needs to address this, because it is a problem for people coming out and wanting to turn left. And there's a triangle, so you take your life in your hands to do it, but people do it. So, we need to recognize that and look at that intersection, please.
Any, any other questions for Lisa on this bill? All right, very good. All right, so, items B and C have been postponed. That brings us to citizen comments. Anyone who would care to come forward and address the Board of Alderman, do so. If you give your name, please, and your address, if you're comfortable doing it, you'll have at least three minutes to address the board. Okay, I'm hearing crickets again, so I'm gonna move along.
Your Honor, make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adjourned the meeting. Is there any, as, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Or adjourned?
So, is this technically your last meeting?
No, no.
I think the game's almost over. The Blues are...
The fifty, they'll have the certified vote, but you still, you still oversee that meeting to start with.